I'm gonna try.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I will call this meeting of Committee of the Hold Order.
Bubble gum on your nose with this shirt.
And there's too much conversation going on around this table. And I'd like to acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of Tlaman Nation. Welcome to Alternate Director, Municipal Director Dow. Nice to have you back at the table. And Directors, you will see the agenda in front of you. There is no eight point two, just so you know that the item that was originally published as eight point two. It's no longer on the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda, Director Gisborne?
Yeah, I was gonna request that five point one be under item eight point one.
Five point one refers to eight point one. Okay, everyone in agreement that we do that? I'm not seeing any objecting.
Just to clarity, is it gonna be considered after eight point one?
After eight point one? Point one one. Thank you. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to adopt, please. Director Gisborne, Director Elliott, all in favor? Any opposed? Very. Minutes of October twenty second, are there errors or omissions? If none, could I please have a motion to adopt? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Very. I understand that we have one unregistered delegation, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Nadine Sherman would like to speak. To item, well, previously five point one and eight point one.
In a proper sense. To the table, Nadine, and you will have ten minutes to present your intentions. If you want that long.
Okay, super, thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm just part of an informal delegation from the Myrtle Creek area. And we have two requests of the Regional District. The first request is that you appoint and liaise with a community water advisory committee that would be appointed from the Myrtle Creek community. And that will serve several purposes. One is better communication between the Regional District and the Myrtle Creek community, and also as a way to respond to their suggestions and even scientific observations on some of the reports. Yeah. So the second request is that that the Regional District begin immediately to initiate a community planning process for the extension of the pipeline from, for city water, from the city Powell River, that is surface water, from its current termination on Rifle Road to its existing tie-in that was established by the developer Todd English at the base of South Hill Road, which is a distance of fourteen hundred meters. Is that two?
Thank you very much.
Okay, sure, sure.
Directors may have questions of you regarding this information, so I'll throw it open to Directors. Are there questions of this delegation? Director Elliott?
I just wanted to make sure I understood your ask. And it was that there be a, you're gonna create a committee in the Myrtle Creek area, and you want someone from our board to be on that committee?
No, not quite. What we want is for the board to allow a committee on the community, which might be five or six members at the absolute most, which would allow us a vehicle to communicate with the Regional District when required, when we have concerns about the water system, the Myrtle Pond Water System, and also to make suggestions. As we're the users, we are in contact with that water every day. We know some of the issues, we know some of the flow issues. And the other thing is that some of us have some scientific training and are really able to evaluate perhaps better even than some of the employees of the Regional District, some of the scientific claims made in some of the, like, the recent report on the water. So we want to just have a voice concerning the Myrtle Pond Water System and/or the furnishing of water to the Myrtle Creek.
And the second request was to extend city water along a previously proposed route. And normally a developer would pay for all of that.
Yeah.
And so you're just looking at a planning process that would include that.
In order to even initiate planning for such, you know, completion of such a pipeline, my understanding, and it may be wrong, you can correct me, is that you require a community planning process for the people that it would affect. Is that correct?
Correspondent?
Thank you, through the chair. What that sounds like is a service or a service improvement. And there is a legislative requirement to engage and get approval from everyone who would be affected by that tax or that change. So there is a process around that. What is the first part of the process, though, would be determining costs related to that. And tax the service area related to that.
Fair enough, and that, thank you for that clarification, because obviously I don't know these sort of things. And so given that the district already supplies our water, we're just suggesting that the investigation into an alternative source than digging more wells. I mean, obviously, you know, I don't think there's any doubt, and nobody doubts that we need to dig another well, as the report suggests, because we have an interim problem. But it is possible that we also have a groundwater problem, which is very common worldwide right now. We're seeing diminishment of groundwater supplies. We're not, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm not a hydrogeologist. But no matter what, a safer and more reliable source is always gonna be surface water, given our climate change regime right now. And there is abundant surface water, and bringing that pipeline, fourteen hundred meters, we're just asking that that investigation into that possibility be entertained at this time, because it's fourteen hundred meters, like, it's not that far. And we understand that there would be a cost, but there are already so many costs that the Regional District has had to bear in order to continue supplying our community with water. And we're just suggesting that this might be a viable alternative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now Director Fall, then Director Gisborne, then Director Dow.
Thank you, Chair. My question's quite brief. It's a follow-on on Director Elliott. So when I heard you speak, and thank you for coming towards us, before us, you asked, one of your requests is for us to appoint a liaison with a, a community water advisory committee. So the question is, so we're clear, is such a committee in existence right now? Or would you create, and, no, there isn't. And that's just because the normal process to request liaison would be that there exists a group. So I can see that they'd probably happen in conjunction, but we're gonna be doing appointments today. We can appoint people if we choose to, two groups, if it's appropriate. But, you know, because the other option is that we create it, but then it becomes a QRD advisory committee, which is a different kettle of fish. So if I understand your response to Director Elliott, it's the latter. It's a community group, we have a liaison. So I guess, and, you know, and I'm just saying that so it's clear for our staff, who I see Mr. Deveraux on the call here, that I can see the answer. So I'll leave it there. I think that's just to clarify. Thanks.
Just to respond, we do have an informal committee now. We just want a vehicle to occasionally, in this manner, communicate with the RD.
Correspondent?
Thank you, Chair. I can advise in, with other community water groups, staff regularly does engage with them if they want to explore service extension or service establishment. And that could look, it looks a lot of different ways. Occasionally, you would be talking with operations, perhaps community planning. If you want to go through the legislative services process, then you'd be talking to me. So it gives access to various levels of staff. And that's what we're here for, is to communicate and with the public and provide services.
And that, that's great. And we would just like to have that, like, community group recognized. And, you know, I have to say, you know, I've communicated with Patrick Deveraux, and everyone I've communicated with in the RD has been extremely responsive and very, very helpful. So I'm not in any way assuming that that line of communication is not open. I just, we want to have the committee.
Thank you, Director Gisborne, then Director Dow.
Thank you, and thank you so much for coming in. Looking at the Regional District's current meeting schedules and stuff, we have a Savory Island Marine Advisory Committee. I believe we also have a Texeda Airport Advisory Committee. So we have committees for services that we currently exist. So is, are you asking for something similar to that, where the Regional District can create a committee and then have appointments, so that the people of Myrtle Pond can actually even sit on that committee and have that structure to then respond to changes that are going on with the services? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's what you're hearing. And we have already self-selected in the community, a group of people who are interested in working on this issue, and not very many. So it would be an onerous community, committee to meet with, yeah.
So it sounds like, unlike our Solid Waste Management Plan Monitoring Advisory Committee, there's actually people that want to sit on this committee.
Yes, there are people who want to sit on this committee. And two of them are in this room.
Thank you very much. Director Dow.
So interesting to hear your ideas there. And as Director Gisborne says, we have a bunch of advisory committees for different things. You know, the difference between having local volunteers doing it and having Regional District-appointed advisory committee is the board has to set up the committee and then have an application process and have a way of members of the committee and then set up how often everybody wants to meet. And that's, that's been done before. That could be done again. The idea of extending the service is a little more complicated, because there are processes that staff would have to go through to make sure that if you're putting a new pipeline past a bunch of new possible participants in the service, that they, that their democratic right, agree or disagree, and all the other people on the service get the dis, so there's a bit of a bureaucratic thing there. And just having the agreement within the users of the Myrtle Pond Water System is not the end of it, because you can't just run the pipeline down and open it up to the city water system, because the city will have an interest in whether that's doable and whether it works with the system and this kind of stuff. So I just wanted to ensure you know that would be, that would be part of the issue. The Regional District would have to decide to expand the service, and then they'd have to decide to talk to the city about the availability of water and whether that's the best place to hook up and all that stuff.
Totally understand that, and thank you for that clarification. My understanding is that the land that would be, the pipe would be on is highway land. But you're absolutely right, you'd have to consult with all of those Columbia Fuels, you know, all of these businesses en route. And my, and I know, I mean, I don't know that much, but I do know that the city did expand to the Nuthka Ridge area recently, and that those people have water meters and are being built accordingly. So I think it's like, in the realm of possibilities, we just don't know if it's feasible. And we're asking that that option be explored going forward, rather than emphasis on drilling new wells, even though it's obvious we need to drill the well in the short term. There's probably, this, exactly because of what Director Dow, the issues raised, that this is not a speedy process, bringing that pipe.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question for this delegation? Seeing no hands, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And this topic will come up again on Drive. Is there any other unregistered delegation? Seeing none, we will go on to unfinished business. Now, five point one is now gone to be eight point two. So we're down to correspondence, two items. Is there any business arising from this correspondence? I would like to put item six point two and seven point one. I would like to raise that item. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, then speaking to item seven point one, the former six point two, I'm quite concerned about this piece of legislation and the possibility for, I wouldn't say corruption, but, you know, things have happened before where somebody gets a payoff for approving something. And I'm really concerned when you take the decision-making or the approval authority out of the hands of public, publicly responsible officials and give them to private contractors. So I would like to write a letter opposing this piece of legislation. And I'll ask you how you, the rest of you feel, Director Gisborne?
I was gonna second such a motion, but I was just trying to jump into.
Sorry, if I may, Chair.
Yes, correspondent.
You'll see on today's board agenda later on that staff added an item of new business. So maybe, is that what you were considering?
Yeah, yeah, because that's probably exactly where I would be going. So this will be dealt with at the board.
I was going, we, because of the time spent, that's not it there. But it's up to this committee to decide. I just wanted to bring your attention to that and the fact that Laura Rodden is, I mean, if you had any question.
Okay, thank you, Director Lennox.
Thanks, Chair. I think I understand what you're getting at, and I would like to have this conversation. But I did see it was on the board agenda, and I think we'll be able to take a shot at, you know, a look at it there, because I have some of the same concerns, but also questions as it relates to the QRD.
That's right. We'll hold that off to the board. Director Elliott? You have to wait for the board meeting.
So the exact same topic is on the regional, on another agenda?
Yeah. Yeah. Correspondent?
Yes, thank you. So this correspondence, I think, is in support of the legislation. And at the board level is the UBCM news release asking for more consultation to explore various areas of the legislation.
Okay. So I will make my point during that conversation. But I'm not entirely sure that opposing it is necessarily the best thing for small communities. I just, because inspections, inspectors is expensive to have at the smaller community level and is harder for smaller communities to implement. And having professional certification to cover off that, instead of being required to have an inspector, would lower the cost of building housing. And so I'm not entirely sure that we want to object, because that's as a smaller rural community.
We'll have this discussion at the. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. If I may suggest that you refer this correspondence to the board to consider them all together.
All right.
I'm a good idea.
Okay, and Director Lennox is second. Any discussion? Seeing no hand, oh, Director Dow.
I'm gonna.
He's ready.
Okay, all in favor?
Ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports. Eight point one, the Myrtle Pond Water System. We have an opportunity, if you would like to ask questions before we put a motion on the table. Would anyone like to do that, Director Gisborne?
Yeah, I believe the consultant is around on one of our screens. I think it's on pop-up, so I have a couple of questions. Alan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for joining us today. My first, oh, through the chair.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
My first question is on page twenty of forty-seven. And it is figure one, which shows the well locations. Well eighty-two dash one, which is the first well that was drilled in nineteen eighty-two. I've been trying to find where that well is located for years, and I couldn't find it in any reports. So this is the first one that shows up as where that well is located. But when I took a look at the two thousand fourteen water capacity assessment study, there's a diagram in there that shows a deactivated well between, you know, well number O two, which is the deep well that's had an issue, and well one oh five. So I'm just wondering, like, how sure are we that that's where that well is located, the old nineteen eighty-two well?
Well, I'm just going by some, some maps that were available. And I, I, I didn't have a chance to visit the site, so I couldn't confirm it. But I, I don't believe that well exists anymore. It's being deactivated.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've been hearing, is the well has been deactivated. And the reason I bring this up is, when I took a look at the two thousand fourteen map, and it showed a deactivated well between one oh five and two oh eight, one of the recommendations is, you know, to put a new well either, you know, five to ten meters north or five to ten meters south of two oh eight. But that seems to be kind of right over top of where well eighty-two dash one was deactivated. So, yeah, if we go to drill a well, and there was already a well there, I'm wondering if that's gonna be an issue.
Well, the, the, I guess, I'm a little bit confused, because some of these wells have different numbers. But so you're referring to eighty-two dash one?
Yes.
And, you know, that, that appears to be quite a long distance away from the, the, what I call two dash zero eight well, which is the well that you're having the problem with. And so if you're looking at figure one, I don't know whether you get access to that, but that kind of shows out where my best information, based on the various maps and things I have, is to where those wells are located. But I was never aware of any well between two oh eight and one oh five ever being located in that position. I didn't see, I didn't find any maps that showed that.
Okay. Oh, maybe Mr. Deveraux knows the answer to this, because I found it in the Myrtle Pond Water System Water Source Yield Assessment from August twenty fourteen. And under the source for drawing, Mickelany Consulting Services shows a map, and it shows a decommissioned well between well one oh five and well two oh eight.
Well, I, I have to say, that's not something I've seen any information on. I don't know if you got access to figure four of my report. One of the things that one has to realize, that these wells are all at different depths. And the only well that is at, well, the, the, the two thousand and eight, what, two, two oh eight well, is really the only well that's screened in that lower aquifer. And that's what I'm suggesting you consider, is creating a new well that would go into that same lower aquifer. The, what is called MP two sometimes, I think it goes eighty-two something, eighty-two two, well, actually went through that zone. But because of the drilling method they used, I don't think they really felt it was a good zone to screen. And as I pointed out in my, my report, the, the well two oh eight originally was quite shallow. It was in the upper aquifer. And it was only when it was decided to deepen it that they went to smaller diameter, because that was the only way they could do it. And they went down into the lower aquifer, and they did their best to screen it. But the, the lower aquifer is a very, very fine sand, very, very poolable, but very fine and difficult to filter. And that's why I'm suggesting that if you want to consider a new well, that you go down to that same aquifer and use what we call a, an artificial gravel pack. And that really involves putting a, a, well, first of all, drilling an eight-inch diameter hole, and then putting a smaller diameter screen in the center, and then putting some sand on the outside, and that acts as like a filter for the very, very fine sand in the formation.
Oh, yeah.
Answer your question?
Kind of. I guess where I'm a little hung up is if well number eighty-two, which was the old one, is where it is shown in the two thousand fourteen study, the depth of well number, well eighty-two is seventy meters, which actually puts the bottom of that well into the lower aquifer. It shows like it's showing up in the same aquifer. And if it's, and this is where I'm kind of having a bit of confusion, is this is the first time I've actually been able to find where that well is located, but it's a, it's a desk study. And a previous study from two thousand fourteen is showing a decommissioned and sealed old well directly between one, well one oh five and two oh eight.
Your question is?
My question is, if there is a deactivated well there that goes down into the lower aquifer, and then we go to drill a well in that same location, are we gonna run into some problems?
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Deveraux for his comments.
Yes, through the chair, if I may. And in that report from Mr. Dakin, you'll see figure one has the four wells that we know of. They're all marked on there. They're not, there's no well, we are not aware of any well that's between two oh eight and one oh five. Both, both of the older wells are north of the water tower, away from those, that well's locations.
Okay, thank you.
So is the two thousand fourteen assessment incorrect, then? Is it, I'm looking right at it.
Mr. Deveraux?
I'm not sure about the two thousand and fourteen. This is the information that we were able to supply Mr. Dakin, and it's of the best knowledge we have of the well locations.
Oh, it, but long story short, we could avoid that problem by, say, going on the north side of well two oh eight, and rather than going on the south side, because it appears like that old decommissioned well in the two thousand fourteen report shows it on the south side. So if we go to the north side, we could potentially avoid any crossover.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've got a speakers. And all your thoughts, Director Gisborne, because you couldn't come back in round two. So Director Elliott, followed by Director Lennox.
Thank you. My question was, and I'm not a well expert, but it seems like the new well would have a different screening system and a different pumping system. Is it possible to retrofit the existing well with similar features? Or is that just not a possibility?
And unfortunately, no, it's not possible. I certainly considered that. But the, the problem is, it, once you've got some casing, we see, we have eight-inch casing in the, in the existing well that just goes down into the upper aquifer, because that's where the original screen was set. And when they deepen the well, they, you can't, it's very hard to move casing once it's set in place. So they, they couldn't move that eight-inch casing down into the lower aquifer, because that's what you need to do. You need to get a bigger diameter screen down there. So they, what they did is they did a six-inch one, a diameter hole down into the lower aquifer, and then set a screen in there. And, but because it's six-inch, you don't have enough to put the filter in. And hence you, they didn't have the option of screening it that way. So that was certainly a consideration, but it wasn't feasible.
Okay, thank you. Director Lennox, your name?
Thank you, and thanks for some clarification on the, I had the same questions around reconditioning the well. Just looking at the next page, twenty-one of the report, we noticed that well MP two goes all the way down into the shale bedrock. My question is probably to the engineer. I think in the report I read that the new drilling methods allow you to have more definitive knowledge of those layers, like, you know, what is bedrock, what's fine, what's, you know, those different layers of sedimentation. Knowledge of those layers, like, you know, what is bedrock, what's fine, what's, you know, those different uh layers of sedimentation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. And and the drilling method, uh, that was drilled uh, using a very old. Style drilling method using reverse circulation with with mud. And the current, the current methods is to use an air rotary. So given that you're going through a very, very fine layer with a mud rotary, it's very hard to see a good aquifer. Uh, and that was drilled a long time ago, so that's that's probably, that'd be my interpretation. Why they did not even consider um, stopping the well at that point. And uh, putting a screen in there. And they went on. Looking for another aquifer lower level and they went right into the shale bedrock, found a few fractures, got a little bit of water from that. But unfortunately, it's very so- very poor quality water.
Uh, thank you. That was part of my next question is, you know, why we wouldn't try to descend, you know? I'm not a well expert either, although we're learning a lot in our region about wells and surface water and stuff, so I appreciate that. And I guess uh. What is the lifespan of of a well of in the new era here? What could we expect for the lifespan before? You know, in general terms of of a new well?
Well, for for most wells, like for instance, your well one oh five, it's been, I I believe it's been around for about twenty years. And um, one of the things I did look at is uh, are you uh, over pumping the aquifer? So that may, and and the usual indication you get from that is when you measure a static water level. Or even for that matter, a pumping level, uh, has it dropped a lot below what it was a long time ago? And the answer was no. Uh, the 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 aquifer seems to be sustaining that and and able to supply the flow. That that you're getting from the two wells. The only problem has been that well number two, it it uh, they had limitations in in screening it. And um, it's has has not lasted very well, because I think what's happening. Is um, originally, because originally it performed quite well, uh, they didn't have any problems. But I understand from Patrick that gradually, especially over the last five or years or so, you started to get a lot of sand. And the yield is dropping off. And to me, what that tells me. Is a s- small amount of that fine sand has moved into the well screen and that's created instability. There's there's the. The, there's natural layers of of the sediments. Which are in, when they're in place and not disturbed, they're very permeable. But once they start to um, kind of um, move around and and flow into the well. They become jumbled up, the layers that get broken down and the yield drops off. And then, so you get a combination of dropping off yield and you're getting sand. And as Patrick might have explained. You you you, it's great experience, you've had a drill well come back two times to try and redevelop that well. Which means a surging and trying to bring the sand and trying to clean up the formation. And uh, that's only had a marginal increase. And uh, it only lasted about a year and they had to, had to get them back again to try. And all of that's consistent with um, the formation being disturbed in that area. And as to the location of the new well, I, while I had suggested it, it could be between um. Um, south of well two oh eight, I also think it could be slightly north. The idea, the concept would be not too close to two oh eight, but um. Um, mainly because if it, the further you go, the less likely you have of finding a good aquifer. And yet you don't want to be too close. And uh, I I somewhat arbitrarily select, suggested to the south. But there's probably no reason why you couldn't be five or ten meters to the north if if that made, that made more sense in terms of logistics.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone who has not yet asked a question who would like to do so? Um, seeing no hand, over to Paul.
And I thank you, thank you, Chair. Thanks. I had two short questions. One, uh, thank you, Mr. Dakin for coming towards us. I just want to first mention, um, the report was very interesting. And uh, before I get into my question. I used to live at four nine five three Curville Bay Road, so uh, he used to be your neighbor if you were back there thirty years ago. But um, the first, so the question through the chair, if I might, uh, the page six of your report says the lower. Aquifer is likely to extend towards the south. So the question really, and and you know, this is just to see your level of confidence. So if we drill a well. Five to ten meters away to the south or or north or wherever. Uh, what sort of risk is there of not hitting the aquifer if not over the back for, you know, I understand putting it that close. You know, is the closer, the more likely we're to hit the aquifer, but the more likely we are to interfere with the other well and so on. So what's the. Confidence in in getting in, you know, that those aquifers are actually down there where the drill point will be?
Um, well, to to answer your question, Andrew, um, I I think my my my, I have high confidence that that you. Confidence that you will hit it. Maybe, and I tell you why, the reason why is that um. And I look at the pump, uh, those graphs that I show in my report of the pump test. Um, if the aquifer had pinched out or somehow you had what we call a barrier boundary. Then um, it would show in the in the way that the hydraulics behave. What I see is a expanding cone going out for a quite a long time. Um, it may go as far as the old uh, MP two or eighty-two uh, two well, but I'm not sure about that. But I am pretty sure within ten meters that you will hit the same aquifer. Uh, the only big que- question is, and we had a bit of discussion with Drillwell, the uh, drilling firm that get provided that quote. And they have a lot of experience with drilling, both in this area and and wells in general, and certainly experience with putting in. Uh, gravel packs or sand packs, as we call them. And um, they uh, indicated that um. Uh, what was I gonna say? I lost my train of thought. But anyway, they 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 indicated that uh. Uh, the uh, and they confirmed, which is my experience, that. If the sand was slightly coarser or even slightly finer, the gravel pack can still handle that that change in formation. So to answer your question, I think is a a pretty high chance and I can't, I can't really say. Hundred percent, but very close to hundred percent chance that you will get a another good well. And I'm pretty confident it will not um, have a uh. Impact on, uh, you know, it 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 will last out a long time. Um, it will, and as I point out, it will definitely have an impact on um, two oh eight. And um, but it's uh, and 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 in many ways, it's probably worth keeping two oh eight the way it is. Um, it it's kind of a backup, but that that's an option you you could look at.
Yeah, that's great. And and to the chair, I have one other question, which that was what I was hoping to hear, because if we're considering going forward with this. Um, you know, it's a lot of money, taxpayer money, and we just, you know. You can't guarantee anything when you're drilling, of course, because otherwise we would, you know, be a lot easier. Um, but, you know. You can get best estimates and advice from experts like yourself. So the second question is is through through the chairs for uh, Mr. Deveraux, if I might. It's just to clarify. So we, the the recommendation is to allocate, you know, hundred forty-two thousand from reserves, so no increased taxation. That we have in the reserves right now in the service about two hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, I guess the question really, so we have sufficient reserves if we choose to do that. Uh, are there, is this, were there other uh. Kind of expectations from those reserves or are those reserves exactly for this kind of project?
Mr. Deveraux?
Uh, to the chair. Water systems can have lots of issues and when they have an issue, it's expensive. So if we had a blowout, if we had a change in uh, water type or uh. An accident or malfunction at the treatment plant where, you know, a big, a big fix had to happen there. It's it's big dollars. So the reserves, while we have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the reserves now. I'd be much more comfortable if they were a lot more, because. Two, we're two accidents away from being, or having to borrow money to to fix the water system. And with eighty-five households on it, it's tough, right? You think every hundred thousand dollars is twelve hundred bucks a household. Right? So. While we need to do this and uh. It's gonna take about half the reserves. It's a must, but we have to do something about trying to build reserves as well.
That's great. And I know it's maybe a brief follow-up for Mr. Deveraux and maybe it's for budget process, but I. Is the implication then from what you're saying that we would, um, and this is through the chair, is that. We may need to to increase uh, some transfers to reserves for the service to make sure that we aren't. Uh, you know, that we're recovering them. Is that, is that correct? Or or is the uh, is the rate of. Uh, putting money into reserves sufficient to build them back up again?
Mr. Deveraux?
I will let Ms. Greenen answer that question. Um, because I believe you're gonna see more information on that very shortly.
Thank you. Ms. Greenen?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Through the chair. No, we do have to increase our contribution to reserves in that service. And um, the service is funded through a combination of parcel tax and user fees. And so how we have to increase those contributions is to increase, increase the parcel tax and or the user fees. So um, you know, that will be discussed at the draft one budget presentation as well. But no, the um, reserves def- the contributions definitely have to go up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any any further questions? I see, uh, Director Dought, you haven't asked a question yet. Then we'll get to Director Gisborne. Go ahead.
I'm not usually a member of the board, so I haven't read the whole history of uh. Of this situation, but the question that comes up to me is when we drill a new well and put a more efficient filter system in, a gravel pack system. I, it's still gonna be filtering the same water, there's still gonna be the same silt and fine sand. Coming in there, but is this uh, filter system going to be longer lasting or is there some risk that it will? Only last for a few years and then find itself plugged up in a different way?
Um, I I can answer that question. And the answer is no. The the filter system is far superior to the existing screening. Um, and just to uh, give you a little bit of an indication, uh, the um, the the type of a uh, construction. Uh, has a um, a a cap on top of the the filter. Which can be removed and we can always add more sand. And if by chance, some sand or very small silt moves into the well. Then a void is created, you can uh, uh, feed more sand back into the into the filter. You can't do that with existing systems, so that's uh, one one difference. And also. Um, I, my experience is that that these type of filters. Um, are such that they 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 should be designed and and hopefully will be designed. To um, uh, uh, um, basically eliminate any migration of sand and or silt uh. Filter, uh, is uh, or or silt into the well. So yes, it'll be a tiny little bit, but um, eh, in the long term, it should last a long time, like twenty years or more.
Director Gisborne, more around you. Everybody's okay to carry on asking questions? Seeing nods. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Director.
Question to the chair. I only got a chance to ask one question on my first round. Do I only get a chance to ask one question on the second one?
Get a follow-up question as well.
So that I only get two questions? I just, I just saw Director Fall ask three questions. He only let me ask one. Just asking about fairness here.
Um, we'll try to be fair to everyone. Go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. My next question is, when I take a look at table two of the report. August twenty twenty-five, it shows a pump test of uh, five liters per second. That's similar to the June on twenty fourteen, there's a five liters per second pump test, but I understand. That when they did that previous pump test, they had to bring in a three-phase pump. So I'm just wondering, how did we do a? Five liters per second pump test in August? Did we have to bring in a separate three-phase pump? I guess that's to Mr. Deveraux. Um, I'm just curious, how did we do a five liters per second pump test?
Mr. Deveraux?
Uh, I I'm not sure that we ever brought in a different pump. I'm not aware of that. We use the the pump that was in the well to to do uh. To do this.
Okay, because as I understood, um, the well that we have there can't provide five liters per second. Because it's a, I think it's like a two horsepower pump. Uh, okay, so that that clarifies. My next question is about the fines and the sediments. And I'd like to thank all the other directors for asking a lot of the questions that I was gonna ask. Uh, the fines and the sediments, and I I'm really grateful to see this option where you have this kind of sand around that can act as a pre-filter. And if it ever gets clogged up, you know, we can pull the well out and and kind of clean that stuff out. So if we go this route, are we going to eliminate the fines that are getting pulled in to say the intake of the. Pump that's down at the bottom? Because I've seen some pictures of the uh. What's the term called? The impeller, that's just like completely been eaten by, you know, fines in the pump. So. Are we going to avoid that as a long-term operational cost? With this new system?
But I I can answer that question and absolutely, yes, we you're going to avoid that. That's the whole ob- object is to make sure the fines do not migrate. In, because if if you, if you look at the, the, like, the, the existing screen is um. Uh, small diameter, I believe it's something like, I think it's five inches, uh, what is it? Yeah, five inches. And um, it has a three thousandths of an inch opening, uh, spacing between the the slots. And um, the, and that's designed because it's very, very fine formation, but. It it it's possible that the formation is actually finer than that, and that's why it's migrating in. And there's no way to stop that. You you can't change the filter, you can't top it up or anything like that. And um, but uh, with this, um, the the screen system, uh, using the filter pack, and I've had a fair bit of experience on many other areas. Uh, just to give an example, one of the sort of extremes sample, many years ago, um. I was involved with a a well in the in the city of Trail. And uh, a a person, at least a driller, had drilled a hole using a mud rotary. And and told the client, the uh, the city that there was no water in the aquifer. Uh, we we had a look at it and we thought, no, this is a very fine aquifer. It should have water. And we came in with it. Now, the middle, this is a a much more uh, productive area. And uh, we put in a, I think it was a twelve inch screen, had a gravel pack. And they net, and I I was involved with supervising the pump test. It's something like fifteen hundred gallons a minute. That's the difference between, it just shows you a very fine aquifer can sometimes be extremely permeable. But it is difficult to to filter. But once you get the gravel pack in, you got that a little bit of flexibility. Um, to to make it more efficient, then um, you can control it. So that's uh. That's just one example. I've had many examples over the years. I've been in this business fifty years and I. I've kind of seen all kinds of uh, well screens and so on. Uh, another option one can consider. And I've ruled that out, is you can actually, and these days, it's quite, only roughly new. One can buy what's called a pre-packed filter. So it has a a screen and it has a. Basically, sand glued to the outside to form a filter. And uh, that's sometimes useful in some areas, but in this area. Um, it's really nice to have that flexibility of add more sand later on if you ever have a problem. And that's what what I'm proposing in this case.
Yeah, because then uh, as I understand, one of the problems out of the Myrtle Pond Water System is when you get those sediments pulled into the system. It can create a number of other issues, you know, with the impellers. And so what I'm hearing is that could potentially reduce operational costs in the future. Wonderful. My next question uh, is for Linda Greenen and I guess also uh, Mr. Deveraux through the chair. Uh, as I understand, we can use community works funds for a project like this, but are there any other? Grants from, say, the provincial or federal governments that could be used for putting in a new well?
Ms. Greenen?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm not aware of any at the moment. But um, but there are generally lots, you know, there are generally grants available for water systems. And yes, community works could be used for this project.
Um, as a, as a follow-up, I I know you'd need a motion, but of course, we've got our new policy for community works funds. Would you need a motion to investigate for grants from other levels of government or is that something that the staff can do automatically?
Ms. Greenen?
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, as every time a a grant becomes available, staff do investigate it. And um, bring it to the board's attention if there's anything that we think it could be used for in our regional district. So we're not aware of any grants that are available at this time. For this type of project, other than the community works. So I don't know if the board has to make a motion, because we do monitor grant funding at all times.
Okay, but if uh, something comes up, then maybe we can get a bit of a cost reduction from the task taxpayers' perspective. Um, those are my main questions right now, and I'll wait until we get into the full-on debate of this topic.
All right, there is no motion on the table. Um, there is a recommendation in our agenda. Um. Does anyone have a motion? does anyone have a motion that you would like to put forward? Director Gisborne?
I'll move the motion. Let's take it off second.
Okay, seconded Director Lennox. Discussion on the motion in our reports.
Uh, thank you Chair. Let me just make sure I have my correct notes in front of me. Getting swamped. Oh, there it is. Uh, first of all, right now, the motion is essentially to let the staff know, hey, get moving on this, let's get the well drilled. I presume that there's going to be upcoming discussion when we get into draft one of our budget, and we do have this Community Works Funds policy, where we do need to have a separate committee of electoral area directors. And I would like to see a good chunk of this being paid for by Community Works Funds if the Assembly would be amenable to it, but unfortunately, that's not a deci- a decision that we can make today. There's a few things in the report that kind of raise my eyebrows. Um, the first one is when we asked, oh, sorry, the Regional District asked for this report, it's very narrow in scope. It's looking specifically to well number two and the condition on the property uh up on Bradford, which is really only thirty meters wide. And I've spoken to a lot of residents around the Myrtle Pond Water System, and so far, when I asked them, they're saying like, hey, my well's fine. Uh, the aquifer seems fine, so um even back in August when there was stage four watering restrictions, my understanding was the aquifer up there is is doing well. And as I understand it, the aquifer is not like the aquifers in say like California where you got a big cave system and it it's like just a big water reservoir. What we have, in my experience, is much more of like a uh veins and artery system, where you've got all these like little waterways flowing through the rocks, and at certain times of the year, it just pours out of the embankment. So it can be a bit of a challenge sometimes when you dig in one spot and you're well, there's no water, then you go five feet over, and next thing you know, you're you have a problem, you got so much water. So my question for like a long term, you know, there's long term of getting water from surface well, but there's also a long-term question of if we're to get water for the Myrtle Pond Water System, does it have to come from that specific property? Or can it come from another source in the Myrtle Pond Water System? I guess that's a a question to our staff is in the in the long term, does it have to come from that property? Or can it be from, say, down by the Myrtle Creek Bridge or on the Ministry of Transportation right away next to Terranostra Farms? Or say a private property owner up there that says, hey, I've got a spring in my backyard, come and put a well in? Does it have to come from that spot?
We'll try and get an answer. Um, Mr. Devereaux, do you have a comment?
Uh, through the Chair. Um, we could take the water from other places for sure, but there's a huge risk of having our uh well on someone else's property, right? I mean, all of a sudden, that property changes hands and the new owner says, um, sorry, um, I don't want your well on my property. So that's that's the key there. Um, having it on property we control um is the most uh advantage such. Um, I'm sure there might be uh some crown land around uh on right-of-ways, but then we're, how do you protect your wellhead um if it's in a in a in a road location? And there's other uh just other uh subjects that we have to consider to before we do something like that.
Go ahead.
But it is something that we could explore, and if a private property said, hey, we got a a a spring, we could enter into like a license of occupation or a lease agreement so that when the property changes hand, that stays tied to the property. That's that's how it usually happens, as I understand. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Gisborne, our corporate officer has uh response for it.
Thank you. I think before we could answer that, we would have to really examine. First, it would it would be important to know the specifics of what we would examine. We don't wanna broad examine, can't be done anywhere, but we would have to know uh the ramifications around that. We'd need to know what the risks were. We'd like likely have to get legal advice. Um, but water sources can come from anywhere. It really is, once you're the purveyor of water, you assume that risk, and so having control and risk management processes in place is really important.
But it is a possibility, so I'm sure after this meeting, folks in Myrtle Pond are gonna hear about it, and who knows, we might be approached by a property owner that might even have an existing well and is providing sufficient water, so I'm just thinking about long-term solutions because I know we're we're kind of confining ourselves to a very narrow piece of property, by narrow, thirty meters wide. Um, that's that's kind of my big long-term question is I look at my farm, I don't take all my water from the same ten square feet, like, right? Like it's I look at the whole picture, and that's kind of what I'm getting at here Chair. But for this, I'm in favor of putting this well because here's the frustration. I requested to put this item on the agenda, I believe, in April. Best time to search for water is August. Now, if you go and search for water, you'll find it everywhere. So if we're gonna have water for the residents of Myrtle Pond, we're kind of, we run out of time. So this is what we should do at the interim, but we do need to look at the bigger picture, and I think we should be looking at the picture, bigger picture for a long time before this meeting. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Director Gisborne. Um, further comments on the motion on the table? We are in the debate now, not questions. Um, it does anyone else have something they would like to say? Director Elliott?
I think it's uh fine for the committee to recommend this to the Board at this time, but we did have a delegation asking for some public input on what we're doing or communication or a conversation to help everybody feel like they've had adequate input and so forth. And so my question, I guess, or my my concern is, um, how do we address both of those? And I'm looking for process, sort of.
Right, well, it would be my thought, and I'll let corporate officer, you know, um, be the definitive answer, but we would ask for a staff report. We would consider this motion uh first and then consider another motion that would ask for um perhaps a staff report on creating this committee or using the committee that already exists to become a an advisory committee of the regional district. That would be my thought.
Oh, thank you. So what I heard from the delegation is that the they knew that we had to address the short-term solution of the well, that they were going to, they had a community group together, and they wanted um to be able to communicate regularly with the Regional District. It might be best for staff to meet with the that group and really understand their their goals and advise them of how that can occur. If that is an advisory committee of this Board, then that would like, we would likely advise them to come back and make that official re- recommendation, but we can go, we'll communicate with the community at this time.
Okay, I just didn't want um folks to think that we were marching forward and not listening to what they were saying. And so I think this is a good recommendation at this time. I wanted to make sure we were parallel addressing other things, so that was my.
Thank you Director Elliott. So do we need a separate motion for staff to have that consultation, or will that just, will that occur?
Thank you. No, no, staff will communicate with community groups at any time that they desire.
Okay.
And and then it's just only if this Board wants to establish a more formal process for that.
Okay, fine. Um, Director Gisborne, so this is your second round at this.
Yeah, it's in response to a Director Elliott's uh question and comments. Uh, when the delegation presented, I asked a very specific question uh around are they asking for the Regional District to establish an advisory committee, and I understand that the answer was yes. Um, so we could wait for them to come as a delegation in the future and ask again, but I think we've already gotten our answer. So could we just pass a subsequent motion to ask the staff for next steps on establishing a Myrtle Pond Water Users Advisory Committee? That is then owned by the Regional District, if that makes sense.
Corporate Officer?
Yes, I was saying, we do have a standing committee, a select standing and advisory committee in terms of reference policy, and it forces us to look at uh at various items in that, and one of them is budget. Uh, so we might really want to engage with the community to see before we went forward with that, so they would understand the costs associated with having that type of um regional district-controlled committee.
Do you, Director Elliott?
Just a very brief comment. There are other models that might be cheaper that would get them the same thing, such as a community-run group that has a liaison, gives them the same connection and ability to have that conversation without having an administrative cost affiliated to our staff. And so I think those conversations can be explored with staff, and they can clearly identify what it is they want first before moving forward at this level.
Thank you. Uh, Director Dought?
Being being here for one day, I don't.
Have to bring him back memories.
But you know, I just from my reading of the material I've done so far, I think it is fairly urgent that we have a new water supply system for the Myrtle Pond before spring, before March or April. And I think that's uh that's a key to what we're trying to do, so I'm in favor of passing the motion that's in the package to allocate some money to drilling a new well. And to do that, I hear what the delegation says, and and uh I just don't want to get in a situation where we don't do anything about the actual water problem. I'm gonna figure out the best way to involve the residents. So I I think both of those things can happen at the same time, and we can look at the different ways to have community involvement and wanna say thank you for the people that coming, came today to outline their concerns. But I think, you know, getting busy and drilling the new well, putting new filter system in there is important. And having community engagement of whatever the best kind is can go on at the same time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Director Dought, Director Lennox?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just quickly, this is kind of a win-win, right? Because we can take some action, take care of the problem, have newer technology to hopefully be able to maintain that well for a long time, and we have engagement from the users. So it's a win-win. I appreciate the approach. I think it's it is smart. Let's contact staff, get it right with what the the group wants to do, instead of us sort of telling the group what they want to do, so appreciate it. Thanks.
Uh, seeing no further hands, I'm going to call for the question. All in favor of the recommendation? Any opposed? Let's hear it again. Thank you. We are now on to five point one. That's right, which was to be considered active. So Director Gisborne?
Uh, thank you. Good. For those of you uh that weren't here at last meeting, directed out, um, this the, these items were referred from the October Committee of the Whole Meeting, and they were placed on the agenda to kind of coincide with the upcoming report that we've just dealt with. Um, what I ended up doing was putting kind of six ideas and options before the Assembly. Uh, the first one is, well, just to kind of back things up, you'll notice that this motion is kind of prefaced with that the Board directs staff to bring back a brief one-page report on the following. And the reason for that is, any of these items, if we pass them and just said, okay, staff, we want you to issue an RFP for anyone to provide a minimum of two hundred and fifty cubic meters of water per day and of sufficient quality to meet the requirements of the Ministry of Health, that could take a lot of work from our staff. And that can come with a big cost, and that can come with a big cost to the Myrtle Pond Water System. So essentially, what I was, what I'm asking for, or was asking for, still asking for, is what are the, like, what is the very coals notes? How much would this potentially cost? Would the Ministry of Health even allow it to happen? Uh, are we talking specifically for someone within the Myrtle Pond Water System or someone outside the Myrtle Pond Water System? Because uh for those that aren't aware, uh, there is the Stellamaris Water Improvement, uh, it's not a water improvement district, it's a private utility that's on Centennial Drive. They have two wells, they're only using one. Um, so when we're in water restrictions times and you'll stage four and say, let's knock on wood, the new well works great, but maybe something doesn't work, is there the possibility to reach out to Stellamaris and say, hey, can you run the water into our system? Is that something that's even possible, or is it because it's an old system, Ministry of Health will just throw their hands up and get really upset, in which case there's no point in kind of going further down that route. Uh, the second one, which is that staff direct to post monthly status updates at the Bulletin Boards while stage four water restrictions remain in place. I don't think we actually need a one-page report on that one, but it does tie into the greater water conservation plan, which as I understand is a regional plan, but does it come out of Myrtle Pond taxpayers to pay for that plan, or is it paid for by the whole region? And to touch on that topic, I heard something recently about it's easier to wait ten minutes for a train when you can see when it's going to arrive than it is to wait for four minutes for a train when you don't know when it's going to arrive. So having the information posted at the Bulletin Board, which is right next to the mailboxes, I think can really help reduce anxiety like in the community as to, hey, what's going on? Um, the third one, engage with the residents between Rifle Range Road and Myrtle Pond Water System regarding participation in the Myrtle Pond Water System expansion and capital inclusion including charges. That's in the, that's like the next step for the twenty twenty-one study that we did, which came up with cost estimates and the layout and the design or the the length and the orientation for connecting water from the city limits and then having it coming out into Electoral Area B. So we did that study. The question, of course, I think is the next question is what are those updated costs? How much would they be per property to actually connect? And then going the next step of engaging with members of the public. It might come back like uh when we engage with people on TRAF and Stellamaris where they said, hey, you know, we've we've got the information, it's very expensive, we're not interested. Or it might go the other way, and they say, yeah, those, that's actually more cost-effective than drilling our own wells. So I think number four, sorry, number three, actually is in alignment with what we actually just heard from the members of the public today. And I guess that that's where a a brief one-page report would be, okay, staff, what are the next steps to go down this path? Because if we say, hey, go and engage with the public, they'll say, well, are the figures from twenty oh twenty twenty-one still accurate for today? Um, the next one, of course, is that staff provide a report with a framework for the creation of non-podable water harvesting rebate program, and I put down similar to the SCRD rainwater harvesting rebate program, and that Community Works Funds be considered for allocation towards this program. That's a really interesting one that I was in conversation with regional directors at AVICC, um, I believe a year or two ago. So Sunshine Coast Regional District has a water, rainwater harvesting rebate program, but it comes out of the service of the water provider, which is if you're part of the water system, then you're eligible for it. The problem, of course, if we do that with Myrtle Pond, then it's, you're essentially taxing eighty-four parcels to provide grants for eighty-four parcels, and is it actually better to just save the administration costs and not do it at all? Regional District in Anamo does it from a region-wide service, but it's a parcel tax, and we don't have such a region-wide service. And there's also questions coming up around rainwater harvesting and eligibility for Community Works Hot Funds. Um, so that's where like a single-page report, I think, would also come back with a, hey, we don't actually have a service. Community Works Funds potentially could be, but these are, these are fairly simple questions, maybe, maybe, maybe not. And then the last one, number five, is actually tied in with also number six, which is and after I submitted this and it showed up on the agenda, I realized that it's probably not the right wording. Um, just to let everyone know that it says that the staff be directed to contact ACOM to request an updated cost of option four and five to the two thousand nine Southern Region Water Source Study. It might actually be better to just leave it as get staff to come up with updated cost estimates. Maybe it's you know, we don't tell staff to go and talk, contact a specific provider um to update their costs from over ten years ago. And then number six, the intake pipe at the south end of the lake be considered as an option is actually very much in alignment with the two thousand nine Southern Region Water Source Study, and if you brought the map for anyone that's interested, it's really big. It's like this, for those that are on the screen. And it, that two thousand nine study covered the entire Southern Region in long-term water planning. And it shows having a gravity feed pipe at the south end of the lake, coming down the hydro right-of-way to go into the road and then across Pagetton up into the Nook area.
Director Gisborne, are you um putting a motion on the table at this time?
Uh, this is just like, this is just the preamble.
Okay. Leading to the motion.
Leading to the motion. And then, so I'm I'm laying this all out, and then my question to, through the Chair and to the Assembly, would it make sense for us to say, pass this motion as a whole thing, to say, hey, yeah, we want like a one-page staff report on all these things? Or is it better to pull them out one at a time? I I guess that's kind of my follow-up question. Because maybe someone says, yeah, I like number three, but I don't like number five, right? So.
Part of me says some of the, this information is going to come out in the work that we're already doing. I don't know if um Mr. Devereaux, do you have a comment to share? Since we see you there on the screen.
Uh, not really, uh, Chair. Um, all of the points are, you know, taken into consideration, but you know, they're kind of tied in with strategic plan goals and twenty twenty-six budget, so that's need more direction from uh the Board to uh say which which ones do you want the the marching orders on?
Okay, so, um, you have not yet put a motion. I recognize Director Elliott, but you haven't yet put a motion on the table. This is, this that's prior to putting a motion. All right, Director Elliott.
So the question from Director Gisborne was our, the preference of folks for a motion. My preference would be because we've already put a recommendation for our short-term stuff, we're not talking about urgent decisions. And it seems to be, um, a lot of different things that may benefit from input from advisory that we were also talking about and to narrow down the focus. So we're not sending staff after absolutely everything because we're not going to implement all of them. And that's time and energy and money that we put toward investigating all of this stuff. So my preference would be to not label a motion at this time, but rather try to move forward with the advisory and the community to figure out where we want to narrow in on investigating things that they think are most useful. Um, because I think this is, this, like, the, the, these are all coming out of stu- studies that have been done before, which, um, we can get an idea of the value of those ones. Um, there would have been old numbers, which people can theoretically think about and through inflationary stuff, imagine what the new costs would be. Um, and if they're not interested in pursuing that route, there's not a point in getting new costs. And so, um, I, I, my preference would be to have no motion at this point in time, but rather rely on our future engagement with the community to narrow down what we want to investigate.
Thank you. And I, I tend to agree with you, um, but I'll recognize Director Lennox and I'll put myself on the speaker's list.
Uh, thank you Chair and thank you Director Elliott. That's basically where my mind was at, is that these are great questions for the users of the system and they've sort of touched on several elements within them. Uh, the only point and point number four, um, I, I was going to suggest that's, that's a bigger issue because it's not just Myrtle, it's really the entire region. I think it's time for us to look at rainwater collection. I've been sort of holding off because of that, uh, because of this discussion, but I think, you know, an area A, it's the same as everywhere else, we need to collect our rainwater. So my point is, I, you know, I, I'm comfortable that the users are engaged enough to address some of these issues to then make really, uh, pointed motions to get to the right intent.
Yeah. Thank you. And putting myself on the speakers list, I tend to agree with both Director Elliott and Director Lennox. I think we need to go forward on the recommendation that we've already approved, uh, or that we'll go forward to the, the board for approval. I'm really glad to see the engagement with the community. I think that is so important. On Texas, we have a, a recreation advisory and airport advisory, you know, and, and all of these committees provide valuable information to the board for decision-making purposes. So, um, I'm really happy to hear that that is going to begin in a way that will evolve. It's not going to stay the way it is, it will evolve, but the communication is, is definitely going to happen. So I'm, I'm okay with what we've already done and that's my position. Anyone else? Director Falt.
Uh, thank you Chair. Uh, I also agree with what Director Elliott said. I really appreciated her articulating the thought so well. We, I think the, um, a lot of these things, in fact, all of them are really useful to go through an advisory committee. And I think, you know, then not only to, to refine them so that they're actually maybe generalized in some ways and more specific in others, but also prioritized because we, we know, you know, getting a one pager on each of them right now, even though that might not be a lot of staff work, it, it just raises the issue that we can't address all of them and be putting in a new well and setting up a committee and so on. So I think that if, if we focus on trying to advance, uh, an advisory committee of some kind, either a formal one or a liaison with an informal one, or however the community organizers want to, these, uh, items could be referred to them as things to, to think about. And then I'm sure members of that future committee would, uh, would have other ideas. And then they could prioritize. I mean, they'll know, you, you know, when you pri- when you recommend something back to us to consider, you know, whether it's one of these or another one, uh, or two of them, then we can, gives us some way to prioritize and we can say, are there staff resources? And how do we, how do we implement that? So I really like the, 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 the direction this is going or the, the other comments. And I, you know, I think these are all important items. It's just, you know, dealing with water is huge. I think just the advisory committee would be a really productive, uh, really useful way for it to go through, get, uh, a bunch of people talking about it who depend on that system and prioritization, like things like, you know, even the, the monthly updates on the bulletin board, super important. But hearing from the residents, how would they like that and who, how does that happen? They could, if that's the number one thing, well, we can, you know, try to figure out how that happens, uh, and then in what budget needs to be done and so on. So I think that is where I would like to suggest we go with it is, is trying to expedite a advisory committee.
Thank you very much, Director Falt. Anyone who hasn't yet spoken on this round? Okay, Director Gisborne.
Oh, thank you Chair. Um, maybe there's a little confusion. Uh, the first two items, one about the RFP for water supply to Myrtle Pond Water System and number two, which is putting up notices on the bulletin board are specific to the Myrtle Pond Water System. So if we did have an advisory committee, which so far this assembly has not passed any motion to establish an advisory committee, um, yeah, those two would fall very much in alignment with the kind of work that that advisory committee would do. Because keep in mind that if the advisory committee is established, the district, it's being paid for by the Myrtle Pond Water System users. However, um, the Rifle Range Road, which is the third item, is based on the 2021 study and that was paid for out of electoral area feasibility studies. That was not paid for by the Myrtle Pond Water System. That involves the people that are outside the Myrtle Pond Water System. And therefore, if the Myrtle Pond Water Systems User Group or Advisory Committee is, say, asking for updated figures on that study, that's work that I don't think should come out of the Myrtle Pond Water System users taxpayer, like at tax funds. It should be coming out of the Electoral Area Feasibility Services. So that's where you can kind of run into a bit of that challenge because you're talking about having people added to the system. Well, if you have a Myrtle Pond Water Advisory Group, it's for people that are on the system. It doesn't include the people that are outside the system. Hence why we need to start going those next steps to engage those people in a broader context. So I think number three actually falls outside of the scope of what I'm hearing around the table of having the advisory group. Number four, which is the rainwater harvesting rebate program, I, I'm actually in alignment with Director Lennox. This is a broader regional, I, like, context. This is a broader regional issue. So to say, hey, Myrtle Pond Water Systems Advisory Group, what do you think about region-wide systems? That doesn't make sense either that, you know, Myrtle Pond should then be paying the administration costs to look at doing a region-wide water, rainwater harvesting program that benefits the whole region, potentially even people inside the municipality. So no, I don't think that actually works in, in that conversation context. And the same thing for option four and five, and of course then option six, those also came out of the Electoral Area Feasibility Studies and aren't actually contained to the Myrtle Pond Water System Service. So those are decisions that actually affect the taxpayers of the broader Electoral Area Region, not the municipality. So I don't think that actually makes sense to put them under the silo of the Myrtle Pond Water System because up until this point, they haven't. Does that make sense?
I have a privilege and I'm very sorry to interrupt. I really need to use the wash.
Can you take a five-minute reset? It's fair.
I'm trying to, you know.
Take a five-minute bio break.
Thank you so much, Chair.
That's.
I'd like to try to wrap up the discussion on these, so that we can move on. It's been over an hour and all we've talked about is Myrtle Pond, not getting really important.
And you don't want to provide too much information because we're not there. But if you're talking about expanding a service and that service is looking to get new users, generally that service pays.
Recording stopped.
Welcome back to Committee of the Whole and we are having a discussion regarding five point one on our agenda, which is being considered after the eight point one. So Director Brander.
Thanks Chair. I'm inclined to just not consider any of this motion because we've already taken some steps to address the issue and I'd like the staff to be able to focus on already decided and not be distracted by other, other projects or initiatives at this time.
Thank you for that comment. Is there anything further on this item?
I'd like to move a slightly altered version of number three.
We have the wording what that you're putting forward?
Yes, I'll just read it out. Engage with residents between the right, between rifle range road and Myrtle Pond Water System regarding participation in the water system expansion study or water system extension feasibility study from 2021.
Seconded.
Director Lennox, you're seconding the motion? Alright, discussion on the motion.
Yes, we heard from the delegation today requesting that, you know, we start the process to actually move that water line going from city limits out to Myrtle Pond and we actually did the study in 2021. So we have all the information, I believe, to actually start moving forward, but there are other steps. For example, when I take a look at that study, this is July fifteenth, 2021, that the committee recommend the board engage the landowners within the pilot area to present, to present the findings of the water system extension feasibility study June 2021 and to assess whether or not the landowners are in general interested in pursuing further action. That's essentially what this motion is about is bringing the study to the residents along the area, having a town hall, public engagement, whatever you call it, and then asking them, are they interested in pursuing next steps? Fairly simple.
Thank you Director Gisborne, Director Elliott and Director Lennox.
And so my understanding is beyond the feasibility, you're looking at whether people are interested in starting a service because that's what would be required to do that. My concern is, is if you were gonna start a service, the consultation would be built into that process and it would have, the, the service initiation would have its own project designated to it, including the consultation and a budget and so forth. And so I think the motion ought to be to initiate us, the, the creation of a service, which is how you would implement that and then figuring out what to do for that. But I don't know that we've had enough interest in going ahead and initiating a process to start a service or not. And I'm not from that area. Maybe, maybe other people know more about that than I do. Those are just my general thoughts on, on this motion is more about process to start a service than it is in updating the feasibility because the feasibility is relatively recent. Probably doesn't need upgrading for people to figure out whether they are interested in starting a service or not. Yes, as part of starting a service, you have to update your numbers, but that would be built into that process and doesn't need to be done first. So that's kind, I, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's how it works.
Court of Appeals?
Sorry, I just need some clarity. The motion that was on the table was that the committee recommends to the board that the board direct staff to bring back a brief one-page report on following to engage residents with the rifle road and Myrtle Pond Water System re-participation in the Myrtle Pond Water System Expansion and capital inclusion charges. But we've changed that now for staff to bring back a brief one-page report on.
Oh.
I, I don't have the wording.
Oh, would it, it's essentially the same one, but with Myrtle Pond Water System Expansion replaced with water system extension feasibility study.
Okay, so participation in the water system expansion feasibility.
Yeah. Because we've already done the study, a look into extending water from the city limits.
Okay, I have a speaker's list, Director Lennox, followed by Director Brander and Doug.
Thank you Chair. Just quickly, I mean, I think it's reasonable that the committee, the users of Myrtle System could review that report that was done in 2021 and take the actions that they, you know, recommend the actions that they, they deem appropriate and probably reject the ones that aren't relevant to them for this day in time. And then we'll hear about it. So I'm prepared to support. The intent of the motion seems pretty reasonable.
Thank you Director Lennox. On Director Brander, then Director Doug.
Uh, thanks Chair. I'm not in support of this. I mean, the whole concept of engaging with residents is a big ask. And I'd prefer to see things focused on the motions that we've already passed at this point. Let's, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know about the appropriateness of this emotion because the motion that's in the package is asking for a brief one-page report, but this motion is asking for engagement to happen?
No report.
Or is there still a one-page report on engagement to happen? Okay, so it's just taking the part out of there. I still don't support. I don't, I, I don't want to go down that path right now. I think we have direction that we're already giving to staff. Let's stick with that for the time being and focus on other issues as they arise, but let them take care of the problem we have.
And, you know, we've, we've come around this in a kind of a different way. I'm not exactly sure what we're voting on right now. Corporate or CIO has looked at the entire motion that's in the package with a couple of word changes. It has five or six different things to be added into a brief one-page report. And I'm not sure that's what Director Gisborne intended us to talk about because when you look at the whole thing, it talks about interest particularly in the people in, within the Myrtle Pond Water System. Looks at the interest of people on the possible extension of the water, Myrtle Pond Water System. And I think the 21 report was talking about connecting city water all the way south to Saltree Bay. So I think all the, it's kind of confusing from my point of view, what interests are there? Who would be consulted with and who wouldn't and what the goal is. And I, I think maybe it would be wise to go away and refine these motions somewhat to determine exactly what wants to be, what people want to talk about because I think people are in favor and opposed to different things necessarily and that might not get us where we want to go.
Okay, thank you Director Doug. Director Fall.
Thank you Chair. I, I, I concur with what Director Doe just said and, you know, I, I had other sort of refinement on those comments, but I, I think that it, it, this, this affects different things for different people as Director Gisborne had said that, you know, because it's asked, talking about engaging with people outside the system. Uh, he suggested maybe that wouldn't be appropriate for the advisory committee, but I actually have a different view on that, which is that if there was an advisory committee, they do have a very strong interest on whether or not the system is expanded at all, whether or not there's room to expand it, whether they want to entertain other people, what benefits that would provide with the, if you're in the system right now, you, you know, you don't want to take on risk of running out of water. They've been on stage four water restrictions. So some, uh, you know, I think members might say, hey, that's a problem. If the new well provides lots of water, well, maybe you do want to reduce costs or, or you want to include it in a discussion of, of, uh, extension of city water into the area as a backup or a main source or the, so I think it's doing, uh, it's doing multiple things. And I think, uh, going back to what I said earlier, I think this would be entirely appropriate for the advisory committee to first consider, come forward to whether or not they want to, and they, they probably can't even consider that until the well's put in because we'll, when the well gets put in, if, if we approve it at the board, then we'll know what the capability of that well is because you don't know for sure anything until you have water and you're pumping it and saying, okay, here's the supply. And then there's information on which to make better decisions. And one of the decisions is whether or not the existing users want to expand. And the other part is whether or not people who are outside the system want to be included. So I think the two pieces, but I think that first piece of the users of the system first because, uh, it doesn't matter whether someone outside the system wants to join if the people in the service don't want it or don't think it, it, uh, could be supported. So I, I, I don't think, I think this is too early. I don't, I'm not against, you know, that consideration, but I think that advisory committee needs to look at it. I think it has to happen after, uh, we have that well put in.
Thank you Director Fall. Okay, this is round two now of debate on the motion on the table. Director Gisborne.
Thank you Chair. But, um, I very much concur with a lot of what Director Fall just said. But I want to remind the assembly that we've kind of gone down this path already in, in a variety of ways. So we've done the study for engaging with people between the city and Myrtle Pond Water System. We've also done a separate study on the capacity of the Myrtle Pond Water System, and that's where we did the public engagement with people along Traf Road and Centennial Drive based on the assumption that we had sufficient water to expand the system. If there is concern around this table around people joining the system and there's not enough water there, then I would recommend that we rescind the capital inclusion cost charged by law that currently sits on our books. It says, hey, if someone wants to join the system, they can apply. And personally, I think we should actually put a timeout on that until we get this issue with the well sorted out because that was part of that public engagement of people joining the water system along Traf and along Centennial Drive. This is actually a bit different, a little lateral. Oh, I'm sorry. Staff want to jump in on this? Okay, well, I've been after.
Ms. Green.
This is different because we spent $50,000 out of the Electoral Area Feasibility Studies Service to do this study back in 2021. It was approved, I believe, in 2019. I had an issue with it because we were stripping all the parameters out of it, but either way, we got the study. At the time in 2021, there wasn't really any interest to carry on with any of the next steps. Now with the well failure, hopefully the new well solves all those issues. But this becomes a topic of, well, we can use this 2021 study to discuss the people outside of the service area. And that's, that's really what this request for a one-page report on, hey, what are the next steps to move forward with the 2021 study? That's, that's essentially the motion. And if the assembly is uncomfortable with moving forward with the motion as it's worded at this, at this time, then rather than voting it down, I would recommend that they postpone it until next month or come up with alternative wording that is acceptable to them.
Thank you Director Gisborne. Um, I haven't spoken on this issue and so putting myself on the, oh, sorry, Ms. Green. Calling on you.
Uh, thank you Chair. Through the chair, I just wanted to mention about the, um, the Myrtle Pond Water System Capital Inclusion Charge. The intent behind that, developing that capital inclusion charge was we did have interest from some, some property owners that were adjacent to the Myrtle Pond Water System wanting to join the system, but we didn't have any, um, any idea of what that might cost them. So, you know, um, you know, in the past, people would, someone would want to join and they're close to the system and then it would be up to the board. Do they, do they want them to join and they would just join. But there was no cost attached with that. So what we did was we wanted to have a framework so that if someone did want to join, that at least we had, we could tell them, okay, this would be about the cost that you're going to have to pay to join the system. Um, it's not that, that Myrtle Pond Water System has a ton of extra water and is inviting, inviting new participants. This was just to set the, the groundwork so that if someone did want to join, we had a charge available that we could charge them so that that would pay, that would help to pay for future upgrades that would be necessary when you had new users on the system. And, um, so the capital inclusion charge does have, there is a mechanism in place that if someone does want to join now, it would be up to us to determine at that point if we actually do have enough water to allow that person to, um, join the system.
That couldn't really be determined until the new well is, is in. Uh, CIO?
I mean, just it, it's, that capital inclusion charge is, uh, to ensure fairness to all the people who have already paid into the system for all those years. Um, it's not meant to expand, but we have had people in, um, join the system over the years and have had no charge where other people have been paying for years and years. So that's the purpose of that.
Okay, thank you. All right. If we can wrap up debate then, um, on this issue, um, I'm among those who would rather wait and see, um, after we've done drilled the new well, after our advisory committee is established, where do we go from there? So I'm not in favor of the recommendation. That's my personal view. Now, is there any other debate on this? Seeing none, I will call for the, uh, call the question. All in favor of the recommendation? I'm seeing two. Any opposed to the recommendation? One, two, three, four. Okay, so the recommendation is not carried. All right, let's move on to, we're finished that item.
Well, yeah, we finished number three, but we still have four, five and six.
Pardon?
We finished number three, but we still have four, five and six.
You're going to make more motions?
Am I?
Well, are you?
My, my intent is, but I'm getting, I'm sensing a lot of hostility from the chair right now.
I'm just asking you a question. Are you going to make more motions?
Yes, and I believe I said that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I would, requesting the one-page report, uh, with a framework on the creation of non-potable water harvesting rebate program, similar to the SCRD or RDN, um, and that Community Works funds be considered for allocation towards this program.
Secondary for this motion. That is, thank you. Debate? Go ahead Director Gisborne.
Well, very simple. I think rainwater harvesting is a great way to kind of even out the demands during high strain drought seasons in the summer. And the staff report, I think, can come back, be very simple to go, hey, we might actually have to create a new service. Or, you know, th- there's, there's various options and I don't know all the details because I've taken a look at RDN and Sunshine Coast Regional District and I don't think either of them really fit with us, but I think that's what a simple one-page report will, uh, will reveal. And maybe Community Works Fund could be a source of being able to provide for the rainwater harvesting. Um, very simple motion, and I think it actually has a regional benefit. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Director Lennox. So just a question of clarity from, um, Director Gisborne. So the intention is to, um, have a report that talks about what we would need to do to create a program like this. And it might include, um, with that we need a feasibility study or something. Or it might include whatever the staff thinks would be the steps, procedural steps to create a program. Such as this. Is that correct?
Yes, the question, I think the big question to staff is if we were to offer this as a service, what silo would it fall into? Like we do a wood stove rebate program that falls under solid waste management, but it, it's a, comes from outside grant funding sources. And of course, these things get very complicated. That's why it's like a question to our staff, is there a way that we could provide grants for non-potable water harvesting? Very straightforward. And otherwise, if there is nothing available, then let's have a motion.
And Ms. Jones has a comment?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, it likely won't be a one-page report. It's pretty significant work that you're requesting, so it will probably be a comprehensive report. Um, anytime that we're talking about establishing a new program or a new service, there's, uh, had lots of hours uh, that go into it. So it is, um, not likely going to be a one-page report.
That's honest.
And, uh, I suspect, similar to Director Gisborne, that it would require establishment of a service. I suspect that Community Works Funds are not eligible to be redistributed because those have to go, they, those have to follow the agreement. Um, but that would come out in progress.
It's a follow-up question?
Yep, go ahead Director.
I think I might have lost it off the top of my head here for a minute. If it's to be a region-wide report, it's not going to be a one-pager. It's also not going to be time-sensitive and can wait until more urgent things are completed. And so that's my question to you too. You're not expecting quick turnaround on this, are you?
Good question. Um, my, my hope for the one-pager is rather than a full comprehensive report around the establishment of a new service, and I'll just let everyone know right now, I'm not in favor of establishing, establishing a new service so that we could offer some grants for people to get rainwater harvesting. So I'm not in favor of, say, allocating a bunch of staff time to look into the creation of a new service specifically for rainwater harvesting. Um, and that's my hope for like a, a simple one-pager. Speaking with, I believe Vanessa Craig from Regional District in Anamo, they're looking at using Community Works Funds for rainwater harvesting rebate, but actually having it falling under, uh, fire protection apparatus, as in like, you know, you can use it to start combating a fire before the fire department actually gets there. So that's something apparently there. Lots of really interesting ideas. But at the end of the day, a property owner says like, hey, it's summertime. I've gotten a water to water my lawn. It's been raining all spring. It would have been nice if I could have thrown it into a container and use it to kind of round out those peaks. And that's where I don't want us to do a ton of work on our staff to create a new service. If there is a silo that this can be dropped into and a program that we can streamline it through, wonderful, we can then ask for a follow-up report on more details. If the staff say, well, the only way to do this is to create a new service and the assembly says, yeah, we want to create a new service, I believe we can then direct that work. But at this time, I'm not in favor of creating a new service and I want to have our staff to go investigate this, see what kind of options are available and then come back to us with a like, hey, here's, here's where you can ask us to do further investigation and further creation of a potential service. Um, maybe it's a simp, something is like, oh, you can only do it through grant and aid. Like it's, let's keep our options open. I want something relatively straightforward and simple, but of course, as government, nothing's really straightforward and simple. And that's why I'm, I, I don't want this to be a twenty-page report on how to create a new service to provide it. It's, is there something that is relatively simple that we can move forward on it? And if the report comes back and says, yeah, there's nothing really available, then we say, okay, that's, that's it then. And when someone asks, we can say, well, here's, here's the brief report. And if you want us to spend a bunch of money looking deeper, we can do it, but I don't want to spend a bunch of money looking deeper. It's, it's to, to save a bit of water. I have a sister and I love it.
Thank you. Good, good one. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Uh, what work, what service is the work that will be done on this going to operate through? So where are we budgeting to do this, this one-page report for this work, for this motion?
Um, funny, we hardly begin to ask that question, but I would think it would fall under either general administration or potentially Electoral Area Administration. So if it comes up as a regional thing, maybe it can be general administration, but if it shows up, hey, maybe we can do something through the fire department service. Then I would expect that would go to the Electoral Area Administration.
I have Director Lennox next and Director Doe.
Thanks Chair. Um, yep, thank you. Um, although I totally understand the intent of this and this is focused on the Myrtle System really. Uh, as I said earlier, I have bigger aspirations to try to understand that, um, for the various areas that we represent, you know, savory is a little bit different than area, the rest of area. Uh, our fire departments are already, you know, at least I can speak for Northside, are collecting rainwater. And I mean, um, so we're already doing that. There are constituents that are doing it. What I'd like to see, I'd like to avoid the, the cost, but I think we're at a point in time where everybody can understand that we should understand this topic and our options. Everybody can understand that we should understand this topic and our options. And we may reach a point where we, we just don't want to engage, but um, I'd like to. Defeat this particular motion and then I'll issue a notice of motion uh, for an upcoming meeting on this subject.
Thank you, Director Lennox. Director Dow.
I'm kind of going along the same line as Director Lennox there. The motion that's in front of us talks about. Setting up a rebate system. For non-prof, non-potable water collection. And that could, that could be anything from. What I can do on my piece of property in the city, I can get a backhoe and dig a big hole and put a. Two thousand or three thousand liter tank. In the front yard and use that for watering during the summertime. That doesn't require retract any rebate right now and. Regional district doesn't have to write a report on it. If you start relating it to the Myrtle Pond Water System, which is potable. And paralleling pipes for a potable and non-potable water system and paying people who get tanks in rebates. To where uh, saving the well pumping costs and everything and. And uh, doing those, it gets to be an awful lot more than a one-page report. Do a surface. I would rather defeat this and wait and see what Director Lennox comes up. With is a more reasonable way to do it. A uh, dip our toe in the water, what, what might be possible. You know, and that might be something that's not terribly complicated, but at least bringing together. Any factual documents on what other regional districts might be doing, or what they might be thinking about doing. That's my two bits. I, I think we're just a little bit ahead of the game. To be back in the motion right now.
Thank you, Director Dow. I recognize Director Fall next, and then I'll put myself on the list.
Thank you. I just wanted to concur with the, the previous two comments. I. I, you know, I see the intent. I mean, I think we're all likely in favor of helping encourage use of rainwater collection. All of our areas do it. We saw at the uh, the, on our tour, that, you know, we're doing it. So I think we want to avoid costs, we want to avoid big reports. I actually believe we got our one-page report. I got what I would have wanted from a one-page report right now in, from uh, our, our. Acting corporate officer that, you know. That it would likely require establishment of service. I know you could, you could actually get more on that, but I think beyond that, it's actually also. A lot more than a one-page report. So I think we want to be careful of escalating costs before we really clarify, because this motion's about a. Uh, rebate program, but I think it's broader than that, and I look forward to what Director Lennox wants to bring, because I think. It doesn't necessarily have to be a rebate. There may be other things. And if we're going through the fire department, the challenge, you know, for the Myrtle Pond. Saving water from the wells on the, you know, the Myrtle Pond System could make sense on that system. In other, if we're going, if we're thinking about fire departments, which could be feasible, I, I agree with Director Gisborne on that. But that's about fire suppression. The fire department should not be paying money or, you know, ca- costing taxpayers money so that people can save water on Myrtle Pond. That doesn't really make sense to help. Improve fire suppression and their efforts and having people with tanks so there's water available. That does make sense. So I think. This is kind of too specific for the broader, and I think the broader issue of. How do we encourage and maybe it's information? What are the barriers to rainwater collection? Is it lack of, you know, people just don't know what to do? Maybe it's not the rebate they need, maybe they just need a little step sheet. Oh, you wanna, you wanna set up a tank and collect it up? Well, here, here's who, here's your contact, here's what you buy, install it yourself or hire these people, they'll put it in. That may be uh, as much or more of a barrier than having a rebate, I think. So I don't know for sure, but I, I agree with the. You know, the previous comments and all. I look forward to what Director Lennox may put forward.
Thank you, Director Fall. Um, speaking for myself, um, I believe that this is a kind of a region-wide concept. Saving rainwater applies to everybody, and it should not be considered in the context. Of the other Myrtle Pond motions. I think it needs to be by itself and consider the concept. Region-wide. Um, we save rainwater, we've got two big huge tanks that collect it from the gutter system. And it works really well. It's full most of the time. Um, so. Yeah, I'm not in favor of this recommendation. I want to see what happens from the recommendations we've already sent to the board. And then sometime down the road, consider a region-wide rainwater collection rebate program. But not right now. Okay, I think we've had two rounds of debate on this.
I asked questions, didn't speak to it.
Okay, well, um, I'll go to Director Gisborne and Director Elliott.
I was going to request that the motion be put up on the screen.
He go to.
Because I was pretty sure the motion doesn't actually say Myrtle Pond anywhere.
I think it was the heading.
It's the heading, yeah. Ah, it's the heading that's getting people confused. Ah, this is not, this motion, as it is written, is not specific to Myrtle Pond. It is regional in nature. So I agree with Director Lennox, Director Dow, Director Fall and Chair McCormick. This motion is regional in nature. Hence why when the question was asked, what service should come out of? Is that either general administration or electoral area administration, not Myrtle Pond? And if you had a chance to take a look at my director's memo, um, I. Right up said there, if it's going to come out of the, the only way to provide this similar to Sunshine Coast is to tax the people of Myrtle Pond. So they can get a rebate for their cisterns, and let's just save the whole administration cost and not do it. If it only makes sense if there's outside grant sources for the small water systems. Or it can be a regional funding in nature. That's the request for the motion. Um, I'm actually very much interested to find out what Direct, Director Lennox is going to come forward with. If the directors are unsure or unhappy with this motion, then I would recommend that we refer it to the next month. We can consider it the same time as Director Lennox and maybe his Lennox, uh, his Lennox. His, his uh, motion uh, would actually, you know, meet the desire of the assembly. Long story short. Regional in nature, non-potable water harvesting rebate program. And if you go to the Sunshine Coast Regional Districts, you know, webpage. You can find how that program operates, which is up to a thousand liters. You can get a, get a grant. After you've shown that you've put it in properly, given the parameters that the program outlines. I thought this was a fairly simple motion. It's not related spiffit specifically to Myrtle Pond. That was just the heading. But it affects everyone.
Thank you, Director Gisborne. Director Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and really, I'm not in favor of the motion. Um. Coming out of general revenue for sure, uh, simply because I'm not entirely sure that this uh, program would even be appropriate within the city and. People are already paying a lot in the city for water and treatment of water and. Fire hydrants and the whole works, the whole system that puts out fire and delivers water. And so um. Whether cisterns really apply in the city is, is something I don't know about yet, and so I don't think. Charging through general is appropriate at all. I think it's more of a rural program. Um, and secondly, I think you need to know. Whether you want to put a program attached to the fire service or something else. Before staff can give you a reasonable answer on the question. So I would vote against this motion at this time. I don't think we need to put it forward. I think we just. If, if Director Lennox comes forward with something that's more appropriate. Then I might vote on that one at that time, but I don't think I'm ever voting in favor of this particular motion.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands, so I'm gonna call for the question on the motion. All those in favor of the motion? Who's opposed to the motion? The motion is not carried.
Sorry.
Discussion though.
There was one in favor and six. I'd like to move on. Are there further motions, Director Gisborne? Because I don't know that the committee is in a mood right now to consider them.
I can tell that, Chair, but I do have a job to do.
We all do.
Yes, and.
Do it.
Yeah, let's do it. Um, number five. Like I said, when I referenced this, I don't think the motion as it stands is actually. Accurate in terms of the best way to move forward. Uh, the motion, I believe, should be that we request staff. Come back with cost updates for option four and five of the Southern Region Water Source Study.
Great.
But staff be directed to come back with updated.
Cost estimate.
Four and five?
For option four and five.
Of the Southern Region Water Source Study.
Yes.
So, is there a secondary for that motion?
Discussion, yep.
Director Lennox, okay.
No, thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, Director Gisborne.
I'll try and be brief. For anyone that's watching that is interested in water provision south of town. Which is technically east of the municipality. You can find a ton of great information in the two thousand nine Southern Region Water Source Study. In that study, under the executive summary. On page six. Uh, it shows five different options for getting water to that kind of pilot project area that is also covered in the twenty twenty-one study. Uh, option one, over a thirty-year period, I believe they estimated it nine point three five million dollars. Other one was connection of the city at Duncan Street, ten point eight million. Connection to the city at Nooka Street, nine point six million, develop Hamel Lake, uh, which is. Uh, you know, along Paget Road, uh, six point three million, develop Hamel Lake, uh, going down Paget and then going off uh. The Hydro Right-of-Way, six point six nine million dollars, and of course, these are. Big years based on getting the cheapest possible water cost from the city. Uh, we've kind of already gotten an updated cost, which kind of aligns with options one, two and three. But we don't have an updated cost on, say, getting water from West Lake, which according to the study. Um, which I'll just read from it. In the absence of a negotiated agreement with the city, the most cost-effective option over the longer term is options four and five. To develop Hamel Lake as a source of supply. The main drawbacks to connecting to city water system are the potential intake connection cost and the ongoing cost of water. It is noted that even if the city waived the connection cost and charged the water rate available to city residents. It would still be more cost-effective in the long term to develop Hamel Lake. Um, if we're gonna move forward with broader regional water supply. In Area B, I think we need to have uh, the updated. Figures in front of us to more accurately compare with the twenty twenty-one figures. So that the public, when they, you know, get engaged, um, have some information um, in front of them. But I'm not entirely sure if. It's gonna be fruitful because the other motion, which is engaging with residents between Rifle Range Road and Myrtle Pond, I believe was voted down. So, yeah, we can get these updated figures, but if we're not gonna engage with anyone, then. But I do believe we should get the updated figures so that when people keep asking questions, we can say, hey, this is what the OCP says. It actually says, well, I just read it.
Thank you, Director Gisborne and Director Lennox.
Thanks, Chair. Just wondering if staff has any idea what that would cost to get kind of needed, cost estimate. I have no idea. How much work that is or. Um, I know we're probably putting you on the spot or if you know, but it's uh, I, I'm sure there's a cost to that and I'm just wondering.
Ms. Greenan, do you have any information that might be helpful?
Um, thank you, Chair. We don't really have a good estimate right now, but I would rec, I would say that we're probably looking between fifty and seventy thousand dollars to have that study updated.
Okay, thank you.
Just, yeah, thanks, Chair. Just for clarity, um. You, is that the entire study or just the cost estimates? I guess.
Oh, that would be.
Relate to the whole thing.
Yeah, it would be, I think the study would have to be updated. Um, like I say, we don't have a good cost estimate, but I would estimate somewhere in that range.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I would imagine cost estimates are dependent on new standards and new codes and new everything, which is why. We're getting advice that you don't have to update the entire study. Um, I think it's the right time to look at this question because we're coming into bu- budget deliberations, and if you want to do this, then. You need to be part of our budget deliberation. Um. The question, the, the thinking I have though is that, do we continue to. Update studies and cost estimates, or do we uh, work with. Creation of a new service based on a particular principle from one within that study and only update the piece that's relevant to what people want. Um, because I think the study can tell you what the options are, and the options probably aren't that different from the study. What's different is your engineering standards and what it's gonna cost. And so if people are not interested in, in a particular option, there's no point in updating that particular piece of the, the, the puzzle. Um, so I think in this case, we would be better off with processes. That work with community to figure out which projects they're interested in doing or which options they're interested in. And build the cost of updating that we're into the project that they want to do. And, and it would also be a service creation project. So you would have. Um, it, the updating would be part of creating the service and, and learning about that and. And then be done bef- for a vote, right? Because you have to have a vote to create a service and the information that goes into. That would include updating each of those things. S- so I don't think we have to keep. Spending money on updating stuff if we don't know where we're narrowing down our focus. I think it's the cart before the horse. We've already done all the preliminary feasibility, figured out what the options are and what it would have cost in two thousand and nine. If we're not having uptake on moving forward with a particular option, we're just throwing more money at. Having lots of information with no project. So I don't, I don't think that's the way to go.
Anyone else who hasn't yet spoken on this item? Seeing no hands, Director Gisborne for round two.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I agree, we don't need a new study. Like, we don't need to take this study and. Run it through another consulting firm. We already have the study, and it actually breaks down the individual cost for pipes and water treatment and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, in communication with some other folks at UBCM. And I, the motion was, hey, why don't we reach out to ACOM? And they said. Some director says, well, just ask your staff. I'm sure they can. Plug the numbers in and take a look at the inflation cost. I saw City of Power River has an updated estimate. On the new roof for the recreation complex. I presume you didn't spend fifty thousand dollars on a study to get that updated figure. So. I don't buy that we're gonna need to do a whole new study of the two thousand nine um. Southern Region Water Source Study, and in relation to. Community engagement and policies. When we do an official community plan, we do that. We do public engagement. We do find out what is the public's interest, and it shows up in our policies of the official community plan, and I'll read two point. Four point, two point five. Regional district will pursue funding options to complete a study to determine the quantity and quality of groundwater sources and the carrying capacity for future growth and development in the planning area. The next policy is the regional district will investigate the options and feasibility. Of developing a regional water supply system based on the conclusions and recommendations of the Southern Region Water Source Study. Led by ACOM, Canada, and the above-noted study of the quantity and quality of groundwater sources. I'll just let everyone know, I did put forward a motion, oh, years ago. Around uh, doing a study for carrying capacity and quality and quantity, but I believe that was voted down at the time. If people are contacting myself and the district and saying, hey. Why don't we run a water line from the city out to Area B? And then they take a look at this study and they take a look at our OCP and they go. Well, actually, it makes more sense to take the water from West Lake. But the figures are out of date. More out of date than the two thousand one study is. So this motion is essentially saying, hey. Staff, can you do an updated figure cost? I could do it, but I'm a director and that's operations. So I. I think it shouldn't be that complicated to find the page. Plug the numbers in with a capital cost inflation. And come up with uh, some more modern numbers.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue before we call for the question? Seeing no hands, we will call for the question. All in favor of the recommendation? Okay, one. Any opposed? I'm seeing six opposed. So you have one more recommendation. Do you really want to do that? Director Gisborne?
No. I, I think it's a brilliant um, solution, but fun enough, I brought the map from the twenty, two thousand nine study. But not a single director has asked to take a look at it.
One looked at.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I guess that's just a floater I'll put out. There is anyone interested in uh, number six?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Well, that's quick.
I think it's time to move on. Okay, you've had a really good two-hour kick at this. I'd like to move on to.
We passed a motion.
Point two, which is um, the old eight point one was um, it's the three point two is not there, so. The new eight point two is the third quarter strategic plan progress report, and there is a recommendation. And the uh. Agenda. Is there a mover for this recommendation?
I moved.
Okay, Director Fall, second move by Director Brander. Thank you. Okay, Director Fall, seconded by Director Brander, thank you, discussion. Not seeing any hands, so call for the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Eight point three, which is the information on the Q R G utility acquisition. Policy, et cetera, et cetera, that are related to the Land Water Works District. And there are three um separate recommendations under this, yeah, under this.
Chair, do we have to do them separately or?
They should be done separately, there's no and between them, so they should be separate motions.
Thank you, um. Yeah.
I, this chair, sorry, I would like to speak to them individually cuz I think the directors would understand better. We've been talking a lot about these issues, so sorry Corbin.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
So are you moving the first one or?
Yes, let's move the first one, please.
It has been moved, seconded by. Um Director Fall, thank you, and Director Lennox.
So, uh you know. If you think back to our original list of questions that we had, uh the acquisition policy and what our what our latitude was. These are all regarding that, so first of all, I'm glad to be taking action on some of this, the community is glad to be taking action on some of these, so thank you staff for working on this. These are reasonable uh recommendations and. So as far as the first one, we do need to establish right of ways. It's pretty clear in especially in an old system that um. You know, I I support and the advisory committee has been consulted and, you know, I haven't heard anybody uh. Basically arguing against establishing those right of ways, we, they've been known for a while and yes, they will be difficult, the one. Well, that's the one part of it that um if we get to a point where it's required to. Kind of uh do a study on all of them, then that becomes a problem. So if we can, I guess my, I support this if if staff believes we can accomplish it without uh spending a ton of money. So maybe that's my question for staff.
Do we have a cost estimate then of that word um? Ms. Greenan? Okay, Mick, you're there.
Yeah.
Are you the right person to ask?
Sure you understood my question.
Thanks Chair, um. At this time, we don't have uh any cost estimates to for the L W D to establish these rights of ways. Um what this recommendation is, is. For the board to understand that there is a um. A part of the policy, uh the the utility acquisition policy, one of those requirements is that. It's, it would be the responsibility um of that owner of the system to ensure that. The rights of way easements are established prior to conversion. So essentially, it's contingent upon the L W D to ensure that these are established. Um but the Q R D does have discretion to override this and it's our recommendation that uh. We do not override this specific policy.
Thank you, and just historically in Land Water, it's sewer water or other rights of ways, I think it's it's high time that we establish those rights away, in my opinion.
Yes, thank you Director Lennox, it's surprising that that was not happened in this.
Twenty hundred years.
You know, other comments on this recommendation? Director out?
I I don't think. In in the history of small municipalities, small regions, that it's unusual. They have a system constructed where where people have used the most expeditious path and everybody in the neighborhood. Wants to create a service, but they're not too fussy about which side of the property survey pin pipe is on. That changes the more uh, the more built up it gets and the more sophisticated people get, the more they want to. Have everything very well defined and I agree that there's considerable liability if there are pipes going across properties without easements. I had the same issue when I wanted to build on a property within the city and it took some time to get that. Ironed out, the city had a pipe across my property, but it it wasn't in an easement, so. You know, I understand the issue, I think it's really important that before Regional District looks over a service that we should have that clear.
Yes, and I would tend to agree if I'm putting myself on the speaker's list, um just to say that. Um the property owners, I understand, it can cut water off. Uh without a legal easement or whatever, they were to simply uh dig down and cut the water off, they would be within their legal right to do so, so that's not a good. A good situation. So I support the recommendation. Any further comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of the recommendation? Any opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move the second recommendation.
Okay, moved in second, discussion, Director Lennox.
Thank you Chair, um very clear in the report, very clearly states includes water treatment, storage and pumping. So, I mean, uh in my other job, when it's that clear, you do, you know, it's that clear, so. Uh what I do appreciate and it's in the report several times, uh staff is is. Trying to take all of the information from previous engineering, latest engineering, be reasonable. You know, and and in our expression that we've used, you know. We just need a car that runs well, not a Cadillac, so I really appreciate uh what I'm hearing in this report and the guidance there, but sometimes. The rules are the rules and in this case, we want the foundations of whatever we're building there to be withstand uh potential event, thanks.
Comments? Seeing no hands, um all in favor of the.
Sorry, Director. Right. Um, I'm sorry I'm coming from behind here, I uh. I meant to comment on the first one and kind of missed my, my. My window, and so I just. I know there's a different motion on the table, but I just wanted to. To make everyone aware that when we're saying certain, it doesn't specify which ones we're waiving. And so it looks like we're waiving all of the provisions except for the one that's rights of way. Easements and ownership of lands and that all of the other risks that come along with it are not quantified in this report, so we have no idea what it is. We're trying to waive. And so that gives me concern and I want everyone, and and I know this is, we're at the committee level, when we get to the the next level up, um. I I think we're we're. We're looking into waiving them, is there another step for actually approving that or? I- is this just to get staff the option to look into it and tell us more about it before it's approved? I guess I'm asking, is this an approval of waiving or is this an approval of investigating waiving?
Well, we're recommending to the board, you know.
Yes, yes, but once it gets to the board, if we approve this motion, is there another approval process for actually waiving?
Um. I I think this is the direction we needed to communicate with the receiver.
Okay.
And we needed to know what level of risk. And so what this, that first section is saying is saying. There's certain aspects of six that we are okay with not. Not adhering to, but six point nine is required. That's what we'll say to them. So we needed to be able to provide them some information so that they could go out there.
Okay, so everything else on this list within the report, the the um. The requis- requisition utility, the requesting utility not or cannot meet federal provincial standards. Um budget capability and constraints or excessive risk or legal bill, legal liability to the Q R D, we are, we are waiving with this motion?
Um, I think no, uh but. The project will bring those up to. The standard.
And so we are a- able to proceed before the project because we know that that's what it's about. Okay, sorry, I wanted to understand better. And I know this is committee, the whole, my job is to understand better, so even though the motion's already passed, I still wanted to understand what it was about. And so please carry on, I I um, I know what B C building codes are.
Thanks Director Elliot, next up.
Just wanted to say that my understanding of the first motion is the board is saying that we will not waive. Article six point nine. And article six point nine would continue to exist and continue to require the Water District. To have easements for all the places where their pipes go, so that we wouldn't be in a liability situation.
For that particular item, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my understanding as well, so we're on the second motion, uh anything further on the uh B C building code? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Uh third recommendation, Director Lennox?
Moving the third recommendation.
Seconded by Director Gisborne, discussion? Director Lennox?
Yeah, again, um the point I made earlier. I re- really appreciate and I think most of the. Folks involved up to now would appreciate this, what we'll call the hybrid approach, it's in the report. You know, again, it makes a lot of sense to those of us that are on the ground there that understand what we're looking at, um you know, a building code slab. But then the skid mounted treatment makes a lot of sense, right? And it's in the report and all the benefits uh to that, it's expandable, et cetera. Um, I did see a couple of comments, you know, back to the must haves, you know, when I see H VAC, I start to go, hmm, I'm not, you know, so. I appreciate that those are options and uh, I think, you know, if if and when that comes to be, we'll consider that, but uh again, I I support this approach, again. Something that's solid, usable for the future, expandable, but doesn't uh, you know, isn't the Cadillac, we can't afford that right now.
For sure, thank you Director Lennox, other comments?
Really, so there's no numbers.
Your fault.
There's no numbers affiliated with this, but I'm assuming this hybrid model is gonna be considerably cheaper than the. Than the model that is not hybrid, do we know kind of where those numbers are generally at?
Who have the answer, Mick?
Mr. Jost.
Yeah, thanks Chair, um we have some cost estimates from um previous reports, one from McLahany. That had a kind of a full municipal style facility. Um it's a bit dated, it had a price tag of about four million dollars for the treatment facility. Uh cost escalation and inflation since that report was produced probably put you more in the six to seven million dollar range. Um this one, we're looking. At the treatment uh skid itself, probably around two million dollars and about a a very rough numbers, again, uh about a million dollars for the facility itself, so. Uh yes, considerably less for this hybrid uh facility than something that kind of is the Cadillac.
Like more than fifty percent?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Director Fall?
Uh thank you Chair, just very briefly, I just wanted to thank our manager of assets and capital projects for. This step forward, I think all three of these, but this one in particular, I think, you know, we've been wrestling with, you know, how to do this in a cost effective, flexible way and so on, and I think this. This motion and the other two uh really feel like tangible steps forward and I think it's it's good, you know, we we wanted to proceed carefully to provide, you know, for taking the service on. Which looks like we have no choice, um we wanna do it carefully so it's cost effective, but also qual-, you know, meets enough standards, but. You know, cuts corner, not cuts corners, cuts costs where we can, you know, the, not the Cadillac, but also where we really wanna make sure it's safe and and providing potable water. Meeting those standards, so I think this is really, really good uh step forward and I'm I'm very happy to see movement on this uh, these items.
Thanks Director Fall, anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on this? Okay, Director Lennox?
Yeah, thanks, I just remembered one question that's, that is important for the community and. And Mr. Jostovich, hopefully you can answer this, does the treatment center that's proposed. Um deal with the uh residuals of chlorine, the T H M's that we've been hearing about? Now, I know that, or maybe I I'm assuming that. Those residuals are not part of the four, three, two, one drinking. Requirements, water requirements, but it is a uh, it is a factor in the community that we need to deal with and uh. Their recommendations from Health Canada, they're not requirements, so I think you know the the subject that I'm talking about, I just wanna. As we move ahead, thinking of actual treating the water, where I like Director Fall said, we're moving ahead, which is great, I really wanna nail down. Um and if there's any extra costs that would be associated with with treating T H M's, I believe it's charcoal treatment and and I hope I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, thanks. Uh through the chair, um. The proposal from B I Pure Water is a nano filtration unit. So that's gonna significantly reduce the amount of chlorination that's required. And it's from the chlorination that you get your T H M levels increased in there. Um there's also a couple of other uh kind of filtration methods uh that are proposed as well as U V disinfection. Um so it, as as far as the report from M S R, um. And the proposed treatment system, I I would say yes, it's significantly reduced the T H M levels um in that, in the water.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, we will have the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to eight point four, um the Solid Waste Management Plan Monitoring Advisory. Maybe you have a recommendation, Director Gisborne, are you moving it?
Yeah.
Director Lennox, second, thank you, discussion. Director Gisborne?
Uh I'll be brief, um. Later on today. Not long from now, we're gonna be doing our standing committee and board meeting schedule. Uh last year, I got appointed to this committee, um and I would love to everyone to support this motion, uh that way, the uh. This S W M P M A C uh can actually meet and then I can actually sit on that committee and report back to the board.
Director Elliot. I also am a member of this committee that hasn't met until I became a member of this committee, so I've never been to a meeting of this committee, so. Ex- expanding the possibility to recruit folks to the committees would be a great idea. And um clearly, we have a role for this committee and not people on it, so we need some people, and so I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, thanks, any further discussion? Seeing no.
Forgot something.
Gisborne?
Thank you, um you might recall uh several months ago, I. I brought forward like a kind of alternative motion and one of the things that came up was. This is a committee that we're actually required to have, um cuz one of the options, I was like, hey, why don't we just? Cancel it and create a whole new committee and it was like, no, this is a committee that we're required to have, and I thought that was interesting because. We're required to have this committee, but they're not actually required to meet, which is, so, so yeah, absolutely in support of this and I heard some some. From some folks, when there was the last intake, I said, hey, you're interested, go apply. And they went, ah, I looked at the terms of reference and I'm not eligible, so. Hopefully, uh this motion passes, we can get some new terms of reference and then we can get some people that can participate and we can be off to the races.
Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Eight point five, the Parkland Acquisition Target and Policy. There is a recommendation on our agenda, is there a mover for it?
Chair?
Director Fall?
I I would like to move it, but with with uh the addition of the words at least before uh. Before an additional twenty one point three hectare, so the the committee recommends the board that the Cathet Regional District set a target to acquire at least an additional. Twenty one point three hectares of regional parkland.
So the word at least is what you're adding?
The the recommended motion with at least before uh, yeah. So, yeah, if I, well, if I, if I get seconded, I'll.
For that recommendation? I'll be glad to second it. Okay, Director Fall?
I I, you know, I think, uh you know, this rationale for having this target, which I uh agree with, uh I just think, uh, I mean, I I know in in a. Operational sense, it would be at least anyways, because you can't, you know, you're not gonna say, oh, there's twenty two hectares of op- opportunity here, let's trim it down. But I think it just sets the uh, the the target is really, you know, a minimum, it's not a, it's not an exact twenty one point three, it's that we wanna have at least twenty one point three to meet. The the needs of parkland for the population.
Thank you, any further discussion? Director Brander?
Thanks Chair, this one actually concerns me a bit because I don't, I don't know that we need to have. A target in mind and I don't like the concept of. Uh picking up. Just any parkland, I wanna pick up the correct parkland. And. If we set a target and we go and purchase parkland to satisfy. This motion. Then we could potentially be using up the funds that we have in our land acquisition fund. And when the right one comes along, whatever the right one is, we may not have the. Resources. To make the purchase. So. I'm not uh, not in favor of this one.
Okay, thank you, um I wonder if there's a comment from staff. About that, I recognize Director Gisborne and Elliot, um. Ms. Ronnie?
Through the chair. Um I could comment on that, I think the rationale for setting the target. Is that um the risk the board runs is that if you don't set a target. You could underachieve and that's gonna put pressure on the existing. Park inventory and provide a lower level of service for a growing population. And alternatively, um you could overachieve. And acquire too much parkland. Um that goes beyond the capacity. Of our small regional district to manage um. Into the future.
Um I have Director Gisborne, then Elliot.
Uh thank you Chair, I actually concur with. The comments of Director Brander. As a member of the. As a member of the board. I have this. Look through things through the organization. So yes, when we look at regional parkland and we set a target. We're we're kind of narrowing our vision to what is our parkland, what is the regional district's parkland? But when I'm. Out on my farm or out in the community as a constituent, as a taxpayer, and I, you know. Go to Millennium Park or I, you know, go to Myrtle Rocks or I, or I go and recreate or. Like, one of my favorite recreations is to, you know, go on a motorbike ride up through some of the forest trails. That's not regional parks at all. And quite often I'm like, oh, I don't really care who owns it. Um, it's not usually, it's usually not privately owned or sometimes it is, you just gotta be respectful. But. This motion of setting a target makes it seem like. Great example. Up in London, I think recently we had a parkland. But it's not going to the regional district, it's going to B C Parks. Yeah, thank you, Director Lennox. Does that count towards the target of regional? Recreation land they can participate on? No, because it's not regional district asset, but it's still a new park for the region. And this kind of sets this twenty thirty one target and twenty one point three hectares or a minimum of twenty one point three hectares. And maybe we do come up to twenty thirty one and now what we, if this motion passes, we kind of created more work for our staff. And after all the discussions around Myrtle Pond and water extensions and, you know, we don't want to put too much work on our staff, but by laying out a target. This creates future work for our organization and it kind of sets like a a goal that we're aiming for. I strongly believe that it's actually the responsibility of the board. To identify parkland and to make the decision of, oh, we've got an opportunity here. Maybe we don't even have enough in our reserves, we can take money out from the municipal finance authority and just buy the land now. Or we can look at it and go, well. This property, it's actually thirty hectares and it's only twenty twenty seven, so we're not quite. It's like, that's not really how I think we should do these things. I think we as a board. Identify parcels right before the assembly and then we ask the question, how much is in our reserves, how much would we have to borrow? Do we actually want to bite the bullet and buy, I don't know, Stillwater Bluffs? Property up by West Lake or just, you know, just picking some out of out of thin air here. But I don't agree with this motion of setting a a specific target and a specific date. Well, people use recreation all over the region, whether it's a regional park or. You know, what is it, Brookfield's Power Line? I know a lot of folks that do recreation on that, and it's not a regional district property. But it's community recreation, so we're not as constrained like municipalities where it's like, hey, we've got urban development, now we need to have more community parks so that people. Actually live next to some green space. Personally, I think I live in a park, but.
I'm wondering if the target is, so. Park acquisition has, like, the policy is great, it talks about prioritizing what qualities we're looking for and why we might. What we're looking for in a site and so it talks about biodiversity and all these other great things, recreation, access to rivers, lakes, all of these other things that are great in parks. Um, so I'm curious about whether the uh target is so that we could also set. Some kind of a contribution or budget toward park acquisition, is that, is the, are the two of them linked?
Through the Chair, uh, they're definitely linked. Uh, the parkland acquisition policy. Sets a rigorous ranking criteria. Um, that includes like financial checks and balances that will ensure. That the board's decisions on park acquisition. Aren't made on like ad hoc or on the fly, um, which is actually how they've been made in the past. And so, um. You know, and while. Direct purchase is one means of acquiring parkland. Um, the policy goes well beyond and and actually prioritizes. Um, acquisitions where there's partnership opportunities or grants or. Um, donations or crown tenure opportunities um that offset the need to use. Um, those, the park reserve fund.
Okay, so is 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 this target um? In line with kind of where we were thinking before we tried to make these amendments? And now we're just trying to formalize it, or is it a new concept?
Through the Chair, yeah, I can answer that question. So in um, in twenty twenty three, the board. Um. Adopted the Cathet Regional District Parks and Trail Strategy. And so setting a target was the first recommendation under goal one in that strategy. And uh, it's best practice that's recommended. To set a target and then um to work towards that target.
Okay, I I don't think having a target undermines getting the right pieces at all, and a target doesn't even have to be met, it just kind of helps guide our. Our planning for things. Um, so I I think we 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 ask staff to go ahead and try to come up with these options for implementing. The strategy that we did and I appreciate them coming forward with the implementation of this particular strategy. And so I would be um in favor of this motion.
Thanks, Director Elliot. I have Director Dope, then Director Lennox.
To me, the concept of having a target. For parkland acquisition is a good idea. We can set, and it is a target, not a requirement. Doesn't say the board shall acquire seven hectares of land each and every year. And borrow money to get it if we don't have a reserve, so it's a target. You know, if you're out at Rifle Range, down on Rifle Range Road, and you shoot at targets, sometimes you hit the target and sometimes the bullet goes. Somewhere else and nobody ever finds it. But, you know, having a target. When you get an application. For example, for a large subdivision and the owner of the land is suggesting you should donate a certain amount of parkland. It can fit within the policy. We have a a parkland acquisition fund. That's aside tax money every year for acquiring parkland, that that fits with having a target of acquiring parkland. And uh, next motion is to have a uh. Policy on how to decide which parkland that is. It all makes sense, it works together. It doesn't require that the board purchase part of the plan that it doesn't need or doesn't want or doesn't fit. You can miss the target if you have reasons to do that. I think this is a good idea, sets a, sets a policy framework. Together and uh doesn't prevent any cooperation from, for example, the city, the Tlamon Nation. Or anybody else.
Thank you, Director Dope. Director Lennox?
Thanks Chair, um, I wasn't really in favor of this for a few reasons, um. Director Gisborne spoke to it a bit, it's an interesting, you know, when I thought about all of our parks and obviously those in area A. I had this, you know, size versus user activity, I'll use Diver's Rock as an example, it's a very small park. But it's packed like all summer long, there's people there all summer long. Right next to that, now there'll be a B C Park. And I guess, uh, I think Director Gisborne asked the question, but I really appreciated in the report that. It really speaks to all the different agencies that we have and could work with and as you said, um. We just had an amazing park created right in the heart of Lund with eight hectares, but my question is. My intuition tells me that should sort of be factored into this equation, like I don't necessarily mind having a target or. Comparing ourselves to the other jurisdictions, which I saw we seem like we're kind of in there, in the right, in the middle, but I think you see where I'm going is. Whether it's the new, you know, a B C Park, the Land Trust on Savery, that's a huge, that's used as a park, I mean, so. And then to Director Brander's point. Again, my instincts tell me that we want to build a war chest so that we can seize upon that, those one or two opportunities that come along sometimes in a lifetime. And there's some ideas that we all, you know, they're currently in the community about that, uh, and have the money to do it, so. Um, I get why staff would need a target, you know, that's, I I get that part, um, but I had, like I said, I'd like to. Maybe consider writ large and and I use the back country as my park as well and that's not factored in as well and many, many people do, so. Just, just concerned about, you know, that those other things aren't factored in.
Okay, thanks, Director Lennox. Um, further discussion, debate, Director Fall?
Uh, briefly, I mean, I'm not feeling strong one way or the other, but I do see a benefit of having a target and. I do see a benefit of factoring in the other areas that are recreation and conservation, so the the, one of the benefits of having a target. Is that that helps us justify to the public why we have the fund, so we're building up funds and and if we, the more fun, the let, the less we meet the target. The more funds we'll have, almost by definition, because we haven't been buying parkland, so. Uh, that helps to say, well, we're a bit short. Now, as has been said by other directors, just because you have a target doesn't mean you have to meet it, I mean, we, the target is a goal, it's an objective. And we can say, well, we're short, this is how much we're, we would like to increase it by. And we have a fund to do that and we're gonna make the best opportunity, because the thing is with a target, it's not about. Exactly per capita, otherwise you're down to, you know, Liskidi Island needs, you know, one point three hectares and Savery needs two point two, I mean, that that's. Not how we do it, it is opportunity based and the decision will be us, like, we're not, there's no new regional park just. Because it comes to the board and there's an opportunity and we'll decide and uh, you know, I would be. Happy to make that uh consideration. I do think. So I do think it's useful to have a target and I'm gonna vote in favor. I I also think that maybe down the road, maybe, you know, today and now is not the time, it could be useful to. Consider what that target should be. Right now, the target is by population and and in the report and I think it's it's justified. But down the road, maybe we could look a little bit when there's, when, if if and when there's time at. Considering other factors, how much, where are the areas, how much, how much are we actually short, you know, maybe. Just because we don't have a regional park doesn't mean we don't have provincial parks in other areas that that are meeting that needs and we don't, why would. We may not need more regional parks in an area that's well protected, so I think. That can be a future discussion and I think that would be something I would really encourage, but for now, I think having a target is useful. And now the other, the last comment I'll make is that, you know, um. You know, I think we we can have too few parks, I think, you know, areas that are under, under, undermet, underserved. You know, with everything in consideration, there, we can have a situation where there's not enough parks, you know, community parks, regional parks. Where we don't have enough. I don't necessarily think that we can uh overachieve, I think we can have too many parks ba-. Uh, that are being actively managed and administered for recreational activities. But I don't think that that is a hectare, you know, per hectare consideration, because you could have larger areas of regional parks. That are actually not managed, they're kind of wild zones, they're, we're not, we're not doing anything in them and not spending any money, so I do think we we. That's another line, like I think it's the 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 upper end is limited by what we could manage with the funds we have for. You know, more, you know, less and more intense management, but not the areas that we're choosing to not manage and not spend a penny on because. There there are uh areas like that. So that, I I think that I'm I'm in favor of the motion, but I, you know, I can understand and I hear what other people are saying too.
Okay, thanks, Director Fall. Okay, round two discussion on this item, on Director Elliot.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to the notion that um. We're somehow not able to consider other parks within our calculation or. Find a way to include them in our overall allocation, I mean, we might not be there yet, but there's, there's nothing saying we can't. Do that and still have a target. Um, I think the target is, is. A way of assessing when parks come to us as a, as a, as an option, it's a way of assessing. Um, whether we want the p- park and that's one of the criteria we can look at and staff will bring it forward in the report and how that. How that fits in with our target, they can also tell us um about provincial parks and all of that in our region versus other regions if we want. If we give that direction. Um, so this only augments and adds to our capability to make good decisions along the way. And put them in context with, with an overall strategy. And um, the the recommendations from the master plan suggested that we have. A target just for that purposes, for decision making purposes when, when park opportunities come to us. And so, um. I'm in favor of having all the information we can, we're making decisions as we go along, this will, this will, this target helps us in that regard. Um, the staff, the tub crime and trouble to go forward and provide this report based on our direction to ask them to follow that strategy. And I'm in favor of this particular target. The other thing I wanted to point out was not only that we could incorporate better ways of including provincial parks or. Land trusts or other things within our decision making. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out is, um. We, we, we have a need in our area to conserve certain things like Douglas fir. And the more avenues we have for doing that, all the Douglas fir currently is covered by private lands. The big Douglas fir is, is being endangered by climate uh warming, the bulk of the. The biogeoclimatic zones that support the large Douglas fir are not on crown lands or places we're gonna acquire parks unless. We work with private landlords that want to donate, donate those or sell them or some such thing. And so if we are interested in uh. Um, water routes or creeks or parks that also conserve our Douglas fir for future generations. This might be a way to target that. I don't know if that's in one of our criteria, um. I I was gonna read that, but I didn't, I like reread it, I, it doesn't tweak my memory. But I do know that if we do not start conserving some of the big Douglas fir, it it will be gone.
Thanks, Director Elliot. Uh, Ms. Ronan?
Thank you Chair, if I could just comment on Director Elliot's um comments that uh. Yeah, the the acquisition policy itself um. Does prioritize areas with um, like sensitive ecosystems and. Um, so that type of a value like a coastal Douglas fir ecosystem would um. Would be prioritized through the ranking criteria.
At the top of the list.
Thank you. Um, I'm seeing no further hands, I'm gonna call for the vote, this is item number one, oh.
I just wanted to just, I thought this is not any, I've never seen any particular question, but I did want to say that. Setting a target is mostly like a communication method and goal and uh, it might. I think we have already got two point four or hectares towards that. Target already since the adoption of the strategy, so that might be.
Good news for you?
Good news for you. Anyways, I just thought that was pertinent information.
Okay, could we now call for the vote? This is on item number one, under eight point five. All in favor? And hold your hand up, I'm seeing one, two, three, four, yeah, any opposed? One, two, three, okay, the motion is carried. Now, part two of the motion, yeah, Director Brander? Remove the recommendation, seconded by. All seconded? Um, and this is to adopt the parkland acquisition policy to guide future decisions. Discussion? Director Gisborne and then Director Elliot?
Correct me if I'm wrong, might be. Uh. Number of years ago, we did our called Parks and Trails Strategy and I recall that in there, there was a Parks. Uh, acquisition policy, is this motion to amend the existing policy or is this to actually adopt? Uh, a policy that's, we don't, do we have a policy in existence already?
We'll get that answer for you, Ms. Ronan.
Thank you Chair. Uh, the the strategy, the Parks and Trails strategy included. A draft policy in the appendix. And so, um, the work that staff has done on this report is to. Um, the C A O and all the department heads have uh helped me with this, but a review of that policy. And so what is contained in your agenda, the Schedule A to the staff report. Um, is the amended policy. So we started with the draft policy in the strategy. And there's a track changes version, version in Schedule A that shows where the changes were made. And then Schedule B. To the staff report is a clean copy. Um, with all of the appendices to the policy.
Hey, thank you, that was, that's what my understanding was and that's where I think I got a little confused earlier where it was like, oh, we're going to adopt a policy and it's like, but I. I see a new policy and an old policy and uh, yeah, that that kind of makes sense to me. Um. On that. Sure, I'm I'm comfortable with moving forward with the parkland acquisition policy. So I I did also want to speak to the last motion. It makes me think about quite often, where are we going and how did we get here? So where we're going is the parkland acquisition policy, you know, setting a target. But I think about how we got here, we have Haywire Bay in Area B, we have um Paradise Exhibition Grounds and we have the Myrtle Rocks Regional Park. I don't think I've heard a single person say, I don't like those parks. So yes, we as a regional district you know, created those parks, took ownership of those parks as, at an ad hoc basis. We didn't have any policy. We didn't have any targets. We didn't have any parkland acquisition fund. We didn't have all this extra administration or bureaucracy. Or just did it. And I think that's cost-effective service delivery. Honestly, I think a lot of this extra stuff isn't necessary. I think ultimately at the end of the day, and, and sure, for, for setting a target, those kind of things, you know, you go to the range and you, you set your target. That doesn't really matter. What actually matters is when you go to hunt the animal and can you put the bolt or the bullet where it needs to be. It matters when it matters. And all this is just practice, in my opinion. It's, it's paperwork exercise. It's punching the hole in the paper at the range. And what to me matters is you use the hunting, are you gonna put it in the right spot? And I think that's ultimately the decision of the board. And I don't, I honestly don't feel like I need a whole pile of paperwork to make a decision. But that's just me. Thank you Chair.
Director Elliott?
Well, I'm good, thank you.
You're good. Seeing uh Director Doubt and Director Fall.
Need to be argumentative, but I don't think we create the policies so that we know what parkland we have to create. I think we create the policies as a board so staff knows what the desire of the members of the board are. Make it easier.
Thanks Director Doubt. Director Fall?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Director Doubt and I, 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 I really wanna express appreciation for staff for putting this forward. I think uh it, it, it was already as in a draft forum in the Parks and Trails Strategy as we heard. More or less what we've been following and yes, we could do it on an ad hoc basis. This helps. You know, we, it's not like we have lots of uh, you know, decisions on this and it would be nice if there were more. But, you know, it really clarifies and I think it articulates in a more refined way what we're looking for. Maybe in the past it was ad hoc and it might have been appropriate. Times change and, and property is very expensive now. Money, money scarce and, and ecosystems are more endangered than they were twenty years ago and so on. And I think, you know, the, the clarifying, the, the, the process so that the board approves, I think that makes sense and that the staff recommend, you know, through the C A O and staff. And the, the policy prioritization really makes sense and, you know, the addition of access to ocean lakes and rivers comes from the public, but also sensitive ecosystems, species at risk habitats, uh and so on, accessibility, you know, we've got all these things that help us. And when we do decide, it helps us to, to explain to the public why this piece and not that piece. Why are we spending uh tax dollars on this piece or that piece? And I think also the partnership. I think it really gives direction for staff to really, when things come forward or opportunities, well, if there's a partnership spending with government agencies, B C parks and so on, I think that it just clarifies. It's not a whole pile of extra paper, I wouldn't say. It's, it's just a few pages and I think those pages help clarify what exactly we're doing. If you have a new director coming on board and saying, okay, what's the story here? We have this acquisition fund. How does it work? Go read those four pages. It's not hard. And then you see what the goals are articulated in writing and not uh embedded in a lot of minutes over the past thirty years. Thank you. I'm gonna support this.
Thanks Director Fall, Director Lennox.
One last quick question. What's in the fund right now for parks acquisition? It is an important question. Maybe Ms. Greenen would.
Not enough.
I know the answer to that.
It's cause it was. Thank you Chair, through the chair. One second please and I will look that up.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, we're getting close to when we have to go through something else.
It's the same thing.
Um, through the chair, at the beginning of twenty twenty-five, the regional parks acquisition policy had a total of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And um the contrib- annual contribution is a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So it's projected at one point one, one point two million dollars at the end of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much.
A nice chunk of change. All right. No further discussion on this motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, yes. Okay, we are on to eight point six, the twenty twenty-six standing committee and board meeting schedule. Director Brander? Recommendation is moved, seconded by
Second.
Director Fall, thank you.
Other than links in the recommended?
No, 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 eight point six, yeah. A little bit ahead.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Director Lennox, and I'll put myself on the list.
Yeah, I appreciate um how complicated this must be for staff to try to figure out every year with all the competing. I just can't even imagine. I probably wouldn't be able to do it. Um, a quick question on page seven of eight. Um, I just see early dismissal, two P M. Are we in school or maybe is that for staff? Maybe you could explain what, what that means. I think I know.
You asked by the, uh, oh, I didn't collect a picture.
Okay.
And so that's just for deciding to close the off.
Very good.
That's not us being dismissive.
Never. All right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and my question now, that's a great good one. So the chart that's on page seven of eight, is that the schedule that's being put forward for twenty twenty-six? What is on this?
Um, yes, thank you Chair. Uh, page seven is the script, proposed schedule and page eight is our master copy in case you needed to make changes so you could decide where not to put things.
So we know when the city's meetings are and, and things like that.
Comments and when conventions are.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
That's way more crowded.
I'm just waiting for things to die down. Okay, um, the dates are fine. You probably all know what I'm gonna say. Um, cause we went over this last year. The one o'clock and four o'clock start times are a challenge. Their challenge, cause honestly, I'm not retired. Um, one o'clock is kind of work time. And with all the stuff going on with Myrtle Pond, I, I heard a lot of folks that were like, hey, you know, we wanna come to the meeting. When is it? One o'clock. And man, what an earful I got from people. How could you have your meeting at one o'clock in the afternoon? That's not a, available to the public. That's not, you know, meeting the actual taxpayers that are paying all, for all this. They can't come in at one o'clock and stop working. I have a problem with that. That's not how our meeting schedule used to be. It used to be four P M and seven P M. But this is what we've gone with. This is the one option we have. Fine with the days, not happy with the time. And honestly, I would much rather see us doing our meetings on the off week from city council. In four o'clock Tuesday, seven o'clock on Thursday, on the opposite week of city council. So that way our community can go, oh, well, what's going on at the regional district or what's going on with local government? Well, if it's a Tuesday, four o'clock, either the city or the regional district. What's going on with the board or the council? Seven o'clock Thursday. Keep it consistent, keep it simple. That's the way we used to do it. And we've gone this route. And honestly, it's not inclusive. It's not inclusive to the, for all demographics. It's not inclusive for people that are blue collar workers that are out there working. And they might wanna come and, the, the great example is when we did Board on the Road. Out in Area B, not a single resident from Area B attended. And I asked them. They were like, I can't attend those times. And the irony was during one of our meetings, you could hear someone fire up their mower across the road so that they could get to work. So this meeting schedule, fine, let's go forward with it. But we're gonna continue to have empty galleries. That's, that's the, that's the honest answer. So. Sorry Chair.
Thank you. Director Gibbsborn and Director Elliott.
Um, yeah, so I, I do share those concerns. I'm currently looking for a job. One of my challenges is finding a job that works around my current schedule. The city is actually three thirty on Tuesdays, not four. And then uh, uh, five if we have a cram, or seven for the public part, but the public don't have to come until seven. Um, so anyway, um, I'm okay with the schedule too. We did a lot of work and surveying. I think if we surveyed again, we'd come up with similar results. So I don't think doing that exercise again is gonna help us very much. And so um I, I'm gonna vote to put this schedule forward because we just finished hashing this out not long ago. It looks like you might need a, a new crack at it next go around after the election. But I do, I do share uh Director Gibbsborn's concern. If you, if you're trying to work and have another job other than this one, this is really tough in the middle of the day.
Thank you, Director Lennox.
Yeah, just to echo that, I, I was supposed to be in House Sound today for an important meeting and I canceled that to be here be for obvious reasons. That's my choice and my problem, but I would like to say that as we head into our last year, um, we've, you know, we've voted on this and uh it is what it is, but as we approach the next election, you know, I think we need to be mature enough to you know, look at the group again depending on, on the dynamics. But yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's a lot to be working two jobs in the daytime for sure.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I'll put myself on the speakers and just to say that it's a lot easier now because of virtual um participation. If you're at work, you can still watch what's going on in a meeting. Um, if you wanna watch it later on at home, you can, you know, watch the full meeting at home at your convenience. So um, you know, you can participate virtually, you can watch virtually at any time of the day or night. So I uh support this recommendation. I like the earlier times frankly, because going home at nine o'clock at night in the middle of winter is not fun. So um, I'm supporting this. Any further comments? Seeing no hands? Director Gibbsborn, is that a, putting your hand up?
That's a brief little bit.
Okay, who's?
Sure.
Let's, let's have, uh, let's have the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. Okay, thank you. We are now on to item eight point seven, the uh board appointments. And um I believe the best way to do this is to go through these one at a time. We all have the list of people who said they were preferred or um interested in particular positions. So um
We stop at the, start at the top of the chart?
If we just start with action or with recommendation number one, which is to the uh as alternate to the municipal finance authority. And I think um, we have several choices, so.
I was gonna pull my name. Makes it easy. Makes it easier.
So who we got left in as alternate?
Myself.
Okay, so are we, is there uh that a motion to appoint?
Could we just go through the chart and then make one motion at the end to adopt them all?
Uh, we can do that.
It's just cause I think it looks simple.
Okay, do that. Okay, so we'll put Elliott down for number one. Okay, um.
Coastal invasive species.
Coastal invasive species. I think that was Director Fall. Yeah.
Uh, just as a, a, added information, I mean, I really enjoy being on it. I'd be really happy to carry on. Uh, they do allow alternates now. So that's um, you know, that wasn't the case, but because of uh other uh issues, other members having trouble. So we could appoint, for example, either Fall and Gibbsborn or Gibbsborn and Fall, but I'd be happy to carry on and uh, and uh, that's the rep.
Director Gibbsborn?
Um, I would love to be the alternate. I'm, uh, as you know, I'm farm over here and there's all kinds of invasives that I'm running into and I'm very passionate about invasives, but I also didn't wanna step on Director Fall's toes. So I would be happy to be the alternate for the coastal invasive species if that's acceptable.
Okay, so we've got Fall down as the um representative and Gibbsborn as the alternate. All right, we move on to the next one, um, which is called that tourism. I think there's two names. So I'm one of those two. Uh, Director Elliott?
So um, I know that you're also our um vice chair and have more uh appointments on this list. And I, I actually don't have that many that actually have meetings. So, so I thought that uh we could be a team on this front and uh cover off the two tourism folks and collaborate more if I could go, you know, I, I just thought I should have an appointment that actually had meetings, but I'm not super, um, like if you wanna continue and you don't wanna do it the way I proposed, then that's okay with me too.
Okay, Director Lennox, question?
Thank you Chair. Appreciate you both, uh, your interest. I, I'm just wondering between Cathet Tourism and North Sunshine Coast Tourism Committees, um, if there's any benefit to having the same person on both?
Um, the North Sunshine Coast uh Tourism Advisory Committee has not met in the last year and I don't believe it will meet. They had trouble getting people together. Um, on, as a rep for the Cathet Tourism Society, the city has its own representative.
True.
Um, which is Councilor Almeda and he has been attending all of the meetings um as I have, including the A G M, which was just a year or two ago. So I would like to continue on that um to work with whoever the city puts forward to um further the interests of both the region and the society. Director Fall?
No. Nope, I didn't.
Just so you know, I can also represent the regional interest. I just wanted to let, just because I'm from the city doesn't mean I can't represent regional interests. But I'm okay with you saying that. You also have a bigger workload than I do. You're a committee, the whole chair and your, your, your vice chair.
Yes, you have all those city meetings that I don't.
That's true. That's.
So I think workload in that contest, you win. Uh, Director Gibbsborn?
I guess a question for our staff. Um, how, which service does our funding go through to get to tourism, power over cathed tourism, whatever it's called this week? Which service does it go through?
Uh, should we ask that question of Ms. Greenen?
We do grants for that.
I don't.
I think it's through a grant.
I, we have done it as grants, yeah.
I do believe that tourism path, um, I'm just pulling it up right now, but I think it is through general.
Hmm.
I won't have time finding the, I'd have to look up previous.
Yeah, I started looking through our financial.
Service agreement.
What's up?
It might be a service agreement.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a multi-year. I think it's a three-year agreement that we have.
I believe it's funded through general grants and aid, but I'm just going to have a quick.
Okay. And, and the reason I bring this up is it's coming from general. And it's kind of like, okay, it can be Director McCormick and Director Elliott, cause it's region-wide funding. But if it's coming from like electoral area service funding, then that very much changes the scope. And also if it's coming from general from us, kind of makes me wonder then, why is the city also contributing separately? It, you know, it's one of those kind of questions. Um, that's, that's kind of where my mind is going on this topic.
You might be correct. And I think maybe the electoral areas might do it from their grant. For that specific reason, because we have a grant that goes for them separately.
Yeah.
Okay, while Ms. Jones is, is looking that.
City has a service agreement with
We do have.
Not a grant, it's a service agreement. I think it's five-year term.
Yes, but my point being that we're funding them from the city. And then there's more, there's another service agreement or multi-year grant to the program. I'm not entirely sure how we do it, but I'm betting it's comes from the areas.
So um back to the appointments there. Um, we already have a representative from the city that the city appoints. Uh, which is currently Councilor Almeda. And having two uh council members and no one from the electoral areas. Um, I think, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think we should have a rep from the electoral areas to work with the rep from the city and the other members of the uh Cathed Tourism Board, so.
I'm fine with that.
You're okay with that? Okay, so McCormick will go down for item three. Um, number four, the uh alternate for the Powell River Library Board. I can't read these little numbers.
So that's myself here, Councilor Southcott.
Okay.
And I'm currently the person there and I don't mind staying that person.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what George says about Southcott though.
Um, that's a damn.
The placeholder.
Yeah, all right. So let's put Director Elliott then as the alternate, since she is doing that now. Are we okay with that?
Well, Director Brander, um, the only time he's ever asked me to, to step in for him, I was at a country and couldn't do it, but um, so it's not a heavy, it's not a heavy duty thing.
I'm usually there.
Yeah, he's on my phone. Yeah, he's almost always there.
Okay, so the next one, number five, um, the Board of Points Director as a rep and another as the alternate for the Vancouver Island Coastal. Communities Committee on Solid Waste and Circular Economy. Director Gisborne?
Yeah, um, I'll continue to sit on it. You might as, you might have noticed, I think I put. Uh, except for both this one and the solid waste. Uh, that was before I saw the agenda with the report on updating the terms of reference for the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee. And the reason why I put down accept was I was like, well, if the committee never meets, then I don't really necessarily wanna sit on it. But seeing as how it looks like we are gonna get that committee going again, I'll be happy to sit on, sit on the Solid Waste Management Committee. And therefore I do believe that there should definitely be some overlap. With the Vancouver Island Coastal Communities Committee on Solid Waste and Circular Economy, because when we had those meetings, quite often they're asking, hey, what's going on? In your region with solid waste management, so I think it's, it's good to have, to be on both.
So I'm actually the rep there already. And we, we can change it, but, um. That would be then my only. Committee that I'm the lead on going elsewhere, right?
Right, you twice down as alternates here.
No, no, I'm saying the lead. That would be the actual representative committee. I get taken off of that.
So if we have Elliot and Gisborne?
Yeah.
As director and alternate, are we okay?
That makes sense with our other ones too.
Okay, Elliot and Gisborne. Okay, and number six, um, that's the Housing Roundtable, City Powell River. Who is wanting to do that? I absolutely cannot read a little right.
Southcott and Director Gisborne.
So we, um, we have a bunch of folks on there from the city already. Both Trina and I both go to the roundtable already from the city.
Okay, so Director Gisborne then?
I think so, yeah.
I'll, I'll do it. Congratulations. Excuse me.
Okay, so. As a block? Yeah. Is everyone okay to move and adopt? Alright, adopting this vote, we've always a block. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Harry, unanimous. Okay, we're almost at the end. Business, there is no new business. Question period. Are there any questions for the committee? Not hearing any. We will move on then to, uh, the motion for the in-camera session.
It's removed.
Thank you, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, we are going in camera. I will take a. Upper minute bio break.
All right, welcome back to committee of the whole. We have no rising report for our meeting is adjourned. Thanks for joining us.
Laura Alster.